Welcome to tonight's meeting, study session for February fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Welcome to the City of Westminster's study session for February fifth, two thousand four. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rule of decorum. They're posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while our meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure I'll feel welcome and remind all that there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting. And that threats and intimidation are prohibited. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain in their seats. Uh, in the seats provided and not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be open. City council reports. Councilor Zadi? You mentioned that you went to the EDC and had their thing.
Yes.
Question would be, did they talk about the airport since that's been on our agendas for a lot of time? About the economic driver that is or anything?
Oh, so this was introductory onboarding with with Jansen, who's the president and CEO of the Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation. He was just telling me how the how the group works, what their scope is, the impact of the group. Uh, he, we talked about primary employers. As we know, primary employers are not like the deep, uh, direct to consumer, but all the manufacturing, that kind of stuff. So, and the software and technologies that they use. But more come, there's nothing, no details yet on specific employees.
Thanks. Counselor Hutt?
Um, yeah, so I had um, my interview with Parks and Rec and I thought that that went um, really well. And um, I also attended the Adams twelve uh, blueprint task force. It's a task force um, about Adams County, uh, the school district and where they're going to be going in the future. And I was really impressed with the way they did it. They used um, phones and we voted and it was uh, very, very streamlined. I was really, I was wondering how they would do it in such a short amount of time, but they're so organized it, I thought it went really well. And there's two more of those. And then um, I went to the AdCog dinner, which was um, very interesting to hear what other municipalities are doing. Um, uh, it was either Commerce City or Aurora. They opened up a um, uh, shelter for homeless youth. Um, and then in uh, in um, Orvada, they're opening up um, something for uh, uh, foster youth. When they are adults, but still need um, help. And so it was really interesting hearing what other municipalities are doing. Um, and then I went to a Conservation Colorado elected networking brunch. And um, that was um, I met some other people uh, that are city councilors uh, at other cities. And so that was uh, nice. And then um, I had my strategic planning interview with Michelle and I thought she was great. She was awesome. That was a very, very helpful interview. And then um, this morning we had the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. And so um, today a subcommittee was formed. Um, cause we're gonna be uh, and they're gonna be working with an outside facilitator uh, as we are looking to reorganize and restructure. Um, a lot of what they've been doing is collecting data, but the data hasn't changed in a good ten to fifteen years. And so um, we're trying to figure out where um, the stewardship council should be going in the future. Um, so that's, that's my report.
Counselor Kamal.
Yeah, yes, um, on a, a personal meeting, I met with a couple that I've been trying to help out over the last six months. Um, to help them find places to park legally. And so that's, I'm just preemptively stating that here because that's something I would like to bring up later, especially in our strategic meeting is what we can do about that. Um, I did attend the Kiwanis kickoff, which was really great. I'm very excited that we have a chapter. I've been wanting to join that for years and, you know, only had Orvadas and now we've got that, which is really great. Um, I went to the Environmental Advisory Board meeting and um, the most significant item of note that we discussed there is they are thinking, well, they are in action of forming a regional council of inviting cities from all over. Here to Westminster, most likely in March, they've already sent a letter out inviting um, cities to do that. So that we can do more uh, as a regional council for environmental causes. Um, so that's really exciting. They're already in action and they're going on that. Um, and then I also had my interview with Michelle Kennedy and also the interview with the, the vision plan for Parks, Rec and Libraries. And both of those were great. They went very well, so I'm excited about that. Um, I attended the open space event at the rec center, um, which was really great, great turnout, lots of people there. Um, and I really got to hear from city staff about their concerns for our open space, which helped provided me the context that I need going forward, I think, in a lot of our discussions. And uh, went to that AdCog dinner as well, um, the Adams County uh, government, intergovernment. And that was really great. Went to that with Amber, um, got to hear from all those surrounding cities about what they're up to. And oh, and then I did end up testifying, like I mentioned, I would um, at the Capitol for that foster bill. And just so it doesn't come as a surprise, I was also interviewed for Colorado Law Journal, in case that comes out next week. Um, and then I didn't know about this before tonight, but I just received this letter um, from Chris Simpson. And it's asking us about community solar for low income residents. And unfortunately, I don't have a whole lot of information about it at the moment, but I will mention it in case. I'll try to follow up on it and see if maybe we should do more in that area too, see what I can do.
Sorry, everyone?
Um, I also went to the Wester, Westminster Hills Open Space Open House. Um, I was very educated about the open space and I heard from a lot of dog owners that really didn't know what was happening, I don't think, until they arrived. Um, so I spent two hours listening and hearing their ideas and what's transpiring there. And so, and I see we have tons of emails about it that I've been reading. So I think I'm getting up to speed on that and uh, hopefully we can listen to the people and try to make a balance there. Um, I also went to the history board meeting. Um, they're working on a grant for surveying properties in our city, actually surveying, not surveys. So um, they don't think they'll have it done until probably end of year for next year. They're not gonna get the grant this year. It'll be for next year. And also they have, they have tours they're doing again this year that you can see. I think they're in the Westminster Recreation Guide. Um, I guess everyone loves their history tours, so I plan on trying to do at least one of those. And I guess our city actually has a museum and then home in, in uh,
Bull's House.
Yeah, Bull's House. So I wanna go see that because I haven't ever been to that. So I have the number in contact if anyone else wants to see the history. Um, they're not open a whole lot, so there, she said she'd give me a tour, a personal tour. So contact me if you wanna go with me. I think that'd be kind of cool. Um, I was interviewed by the Recreation Department about the vision plan, which was, I thought the gal, I think she's a consultant, was very professional. And we talked a lot about all different parts of the city. Um, since I've lived in the city for thirty-eight years and my kids were really into recreation. And they were really into recreation in Broomfield, so there's things that Broomfield do that we don't do. Um, also this morning I was on the YouTube channel for the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know if anyone saw me, but I was there and I thought that went pretty well. Um, I guess that's all I can think of right now, but.
Counselor Demat, or did you have a question?
I was gonna say, I'm so sorry, I forgot one thing when you said invited, I was like invite. I was also invited to walk that uh, the Lexington Trail they reached out. And so, you know, if folks wanna go together, if we wanna do that together, I'm just saying out loud that I was invited to go see that and I might do that soon. Sorry.
Counselor Demat?
Um, some of the same stuff, went to the Westminster Hills Open Space Open House. I have got um, a ton of emails like everybody else. I'll tell you one thing that I think is useful to know is in my time on council, when you start hearing from a wide variety of people who are very engaged citizens, but not necessarily in the things that we do day to day. Um, I think it's time that, that we listen to that. Um, because I have heard from people who I haven't talked to in a couple of years who, you know, um, both supporters and non-supporters that just feel like there's probably room for adjustment with the plan there, so. Um, RMMA, I know that there was a lot of emails flying back and forth on this and has to be probably one of the most, what I consider most productive meetings that I've been to there. Um, some of I didn't realize was coming up. So one of the things, if you remember back, um, there was a lot of talk about a part one fifty study. Um, I've been trying to find some good material to share with the council so that you can understand exactly what that is. And so that I make sure I fully do, because it's a pretty big process. It'll take a couple of years for them to go through that. Um, Jefferson County has decided to pay for one of those and move forward with that. And that is, if you remember, when we rejoined the round table, there were citizens who are definitely so, very engaged in this topic. Who said that should be one of the things that we demand as a city. Uh, we didn't take that road, but I'm glad to hear that they are moving forward with that. And if you um, read into it, that is kind of a precursor for um, potential federal funding um, in ways to mitigate, mitigate the noise from the airport. So I find that to be a, you know, a really good development. Um, granted, that's not a tomorrow thing. That study is gonna take a couple of years. They have RFP, they're gonna start moving forward with that in order to select um, the appropriate people to do that work. You know, that is a, a narrow skill set, so you know, there's only so many different groups who can actually conduct that study appropriately. So um, there was discussion around having a community member. Ultimately, uh, that was voted down. I would vote against that. And my concern with that, that I'd share with the group is, um, and this was a concern that was brought up is that that really shouldn't become a, a political kind of selection process. And that was my concern and I even brought up, are you gonna bring, if you do a community member, are you gonna make sure that you have, you know, two sides of the coin? Because we certainly are hearing two different um, ideas on what should happen with the airport. Um, and my point being is I don't think that that process should be stopped because people potentially could just get in there to kind of slow the process. And I think this process, I think you'd all agree, is taking long enough. And if we're talking about a two-year study, I certainly would like that to move ahead as quickly as possible. Um, and one of the things that the um, interim director of the airport shared with us, who is the manager of Jefferson County, was that that group is gonna be very important that we stay intact. Because as they have those uh, different components that come out of the part one fifty study, that's the body that the FAA wants those things to come back to, because that's impacted communities in order to be able to say, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. And have the communities agree on, you know, on the mitigation tactics that they come up with. Um, we heard a lot of questions around uh, what the data sources were from uh, trustee Serbo from uh, Superior were. He shared that he's actually paying for data trackers on his own. And he gets up every morning, he looks at the data from the data tracker and then he makes the calculations to decide or not decide, but to figure out, you know, the number of flights at night. So when it was asked, you know, where he came up with that data, he's, he's working on that data himself and paying to collect that data. Um,
What's his name?
Jason Serbo, if I'm mispronouncing it, I apologize to Jason. But he's, he's putting a lot of, a lot of legwork in and he's the one who came up with that, um, those nighttime flight patterns. And so uh, he also had some proposals for some date um, things that would both help primarily Westminster and uh, Superior. And the idea is basically to have the pattern that they do for the touch and goes go out a little further. Um, so that when they turn, there's a lot more noise when they turn. So the idea is that it would be more over open space and not the Rock Creek um, community, as well as it would adjust the way that they fly over Westminster. So um, that was ultimately tabled. Um, and I, I was the second on that motion to move forward with that. Um, but it was, you know, there were members who weren't comfortable moving forward now with it that wanted it, you know, they wanted some more information about it. And so I uh, changed my second and asked that we could table it so that everybody was on board. If we're gonna do it, we wanna make sure everybody's on board, otherwise it doesn't go anywhere. So opposed to having a vote that got shot down, I thought it made more sense to just wait. Um, and so the group agreed and that's the direction that that went. Um, last two things from that, and then I have a couple of other things on it, on with the council. They are in the process of um, uh, they hired, they had just signed in the, you know, twenty-four hours from the meeting uh, with a, a firm to go out and replace the director of the airport. And I think their process sounded like it was probably gonna be a really good process. So the process that the group uses will be between working with uh, both Jefferson County, the commissioners, the round table, but also community members, making sure that they get people on both sides of, of the issue as far as noise and everything else going on at the airport. Um, and so I thought that that was probably a really good thing considering we have a lot of folks who don't feel that the community's being heard. So for them to directly get to speak into that process, um, I think is cool. And it will be kind of like our city manager process that we went through where there'll be a town hall kind of thing where you can actually go ask questions um, of the, the candidates that they select for their shortlist, so. And then last, there was, we did think we were gonna get something back from the consultants this last meeting. Um, the reason that we didn't is because, well, partially if you think about everything that they're going through with uh, the director leaving, there's a lot of moving pieces, but ultimately they hadn't got everything through the FAA yet. And so they did not wanna uh, report back an incomplete report that they actually can't take action on. Um, so they, we hope to see that the next meeting. We did think that was gonna be this meeting, but I think that's a reasonable uh, reason why it didn't come forward. Um, and quite frankly, as you've heard, it was a pretty jam-packed meeting as it was. So um, you know, kind of, kind of works out in my mind. Um, any questions on that? And then I have a handful of quick asks from the council.
I've heard they're expanding and adding a runway. Is that true?
I heard the same thing that you heard today. That is not something that the, the
They never talked about it?
That is not something that is under the, the authority of the, the CNR, so that is not something that we deal with. Um, there was an answer because on the question that we got, um, I CC'd on my answer to Commissioner Kraft Tharp as well as um, Ben from the airport. And she gave some information about how people could find out more about that.
Well, I've just heard a lot of people concerned that they're doing it without any transparency. That they're adding flights and a runway.
Yeah, I would, I would point you to her answer because her answer points out that all the things that they go through is actually all done in public meetings, just like we do here. Jefferson County has very similar processes and all those decisions are made in meetings that the public can go to. So um, I, I under, I've heard the same thing, but again, it's not the CNR. But I do think that Commissioner Kraft Tharp's answer about the process is, you know, pretty um, important for people to hear where they can go hear that stuff if they feel like they're not able to hear it because it is all done in public.
Um, A couple, just two questions. One, um, for the part one fifty study, do you have, I know it's gonna take two years, but do you have any sense of whether that would open up new options that?
Yeah, that's the whole, the whole idea. And I will tell you that one of the things when I first went back as the representative, the reason that we decided to do the consultant, well, one, you gotta pay for the part one fifty, so that's gonna cost Jefferson County some money. Um, I don't remember exactly the cost, but it wasn't, you know, it wasn't small dollars. It's a substantial um, effort. Um, but because of how fat, long it takes, we were hoping we could come up with some solutions before two years. And I think that we've seen some with the stuff that um, trustee Serbo has come forward with, hopefully with the consultants. Um, you know, but ultimately that's a two-year process and I, I don't know for sure. I've never been through it. But I have to imagine you'll probably get some reports back as they go through that. Um, I am hoping to dig up some more on the part one fifty now that we for sure go on that route that maybe I could share. Um, and I could certainly ask the airport and FAA rep if we could get some more information for us to digest.
That'd be great, yeah. Um, and then just a quick question on the um, trustee Serbo's um, proposal to sort of extend the roots a little bit. So we've tabled it, but do you, do you have a sense of how long that might, like what do we?
So, in order for that, so basically this, and this was part of the reason why some of us wanted to move forward, but some people were not comfortable, which I think is reasonable. But it ta, like, the group has to say yes. And then if the group says yes, then they'll go back to the FAA and say, hey, yeah, we wanna try this. Are you okay with this? And then they'll actually take a serious till that group says yes. Um, you know, they're not gonna take that recommendation just from trustee Serbo, so they're not gonna do actual work on it. Um, one of the concerns uh, was about elevation because as you get to the place where they would do the turn, the elevation of, you know, just the elevation of the, the ground goes up higher. So you might be climbing in elevation, but the ground is also climbing. So there was some concern or at least interest in having some exact data about what that would look like and if that's feasible.
And who's collecting that data or who's responsible for?
I think that he probably is gonna work with the flight schools and uh, and, you know, the FAA, because he has been working with them to get the data. But as far as like taking action on it is kind of where they need the blessing of the CNR is how it's gonna explain to us.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, a couple of things, I just wanna make sure that, that we're tracking, that we, we get in, in line. Uh, one is, you know, when we're gonna get an update on wards and I think everybody is probably interested in that just because they haven't seen it. So I wanted to at least bring it up and that doesn't necessarily take any action. I just wanted to make sure that we're tracking and that at some point we have some expectations when we might hear. Because we did put it, the, the action from the people had a deadline on it. So I have to imagine that we need to start taking some action. Uh, one thing that I haven't asked for council that I'd like um, support on, and some of this, and I apologize. This is kind of, we're through the holidays and I'm looking at my list of things that I was gonna bring back and haven't really gotten the answer on yet. One is envelopes for the um, bills for people who still get paper bills for their utility. We were told it was somewhere between sixty to a hundred dollars a month. Um, I feel like that, that's an, an okay way to spend our dollars in order to do that even add more. I, I don't understand why we wouldn't do that. So I would ask if, if I could have three people support that effort.
Sorry, can you explain? What do you mean sixty to?
So, so we were told that there was sixty to a hundred dollars-ish in order to add envelopes back to people's utility bills. And I asked because right now, if you get a paper bill, you don't get an envelope to return it. I've heard from a lot of seniors in my six years that have to go find an envelope other ways. Yeah, that's a small amount of money, but I also think if you, to me, if somebody's sending me a bill, they should, and it's a paper bill. I haven't opted out saying I'm gonna do electronic, you should get an envelope with it. So I think that that's a reasonable thing.
Per household, sixty to a hundred dollars?
For, uh, my understanding is all, all in, not, not per household.
Is, is that true, city manager?
Yeah, so pulling up some old emails here. Um, this was the response to Counselor Demat on December twenty-third. Um, he had asked the question, council had inquired about including envelopes to pay bills with those um, who are not paperless. And again, the city's uh, program is to transition to paperless billing um, over time. Uh, right now it's an opt-in uh, program. Uh, can you follow up on what that would take? So the um, the answer was, uh, the city of Westminster can insert return envelopes for those customers who request them. Uh, the program could be implemented by the end of first quarter twenty twenty-four after completing testing um, with uh, OSI, which is the city's printing and mailing services vendor. Um, potential changes to bill print, et cetera. We've only had one customer uh, reach out to city staff and ask for a return envelope. I'd be happy to buy them a box of envelopes if that's uh, appropriate. Um, the expense uh, for each return envelope is approximately six cents per envelope. There is additional implementation expense with the vendor. Price can vary depending upon volume and other factors. Need to discuss with the vendor OSI to determine timeline and expense. A rest, rough estimate of cost is sixty to a hundred dollars monthly. Um, overall, this is a high cost for only a few customers. So that was our response from December twenty-third.
What do you mean sixty to a hundred monthly?
For, to do this.
For the city?
Only one person asking for it.
I, I would say I've, I've heard from more than one person.
Well, they need to call the city and say they need an envelope then, because I don't see any reason to spend sixty to a hundred dollars a month for a handful of people.
I, I will tell you that some people don't realize that they should call and they just think it is the way it is.
Well, I've lived here for forty years and I never got an envelope. Even when it was first started out, I had never got any envelope with my bill.
I'll just add to say that if it's still an opt-in, oh, my apologies. Um, if it's still an opt-in service, I appreciate that we're transitioning at the time to paperless, which I think is optimal. But if it's an opt-in service, then I think we should have envelopes is my perspective. Because when I receive a bill, I have, my personal experience is I have been late on the bill. If I don't have time to go to the store to find an envelope, it is something that when I receive a bill, I expect there to be an envelope to return it. I think that the person asking for the invoice should provide the means to provide that invoice. To me, that just makes sense.
For me, it's an accessibility issue. It might be easy for me to go find an envelope, but it might not be for somebody else. So for me, it's accessibility and so um, I think we should provide those envelopes.
So Zadi?
Is, is that sixty to a hundred, that's demand-driven, meaning we are estimating we'll get certain number of people. That would cost us sixty to a hundred or there, or is that the administrative cost for us to?
That, that's a, that's a total cost to implement a program like that. So it's not, it's not expensive by any means, but one out of how many customers in our utility system?
I couldn't give you a number, but it's
Mr. Door, any
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand folks and one folk is asking for them. Um, you know, we could have, we could have envelopes here if you want, want to pick up an envelope. You could certainly pick up an envelope at our utility billing station. That would be an option.
Well, so I'd say that it's something we should do. And I think everyone here had points that yes, there's the sustainability out, so there are costs, there are unseen costs here, right? Sustainability-wise that we should keep in mind, but this is opt-in. And if it is a little amount of people, we should still make it available. It's an accessibility issue.
Yeah, this, this isn't the opt-in piece. The opt-in piece is to go paperless. That's an opt-in program. This would be for every bill that goes out, that is a, a written bill. There's an envelope in that um, in that letter and bill that go out to the, to the public. And so I, I just would offer that it's, it's going in the opposite of direction from a sustainability perspective, from um, you know, a, does this make sense financially? We're just adding cost um, for our utility, you know, it's not like the city's paying that. That tran, that cost gets transferred to our customers. So um, you know, is this really something that is in the best interest of the community as whole? Something certainly to think about. I also would point out that the council and study session can't take action. So if you're going to do this, we would have to bring this back on a future agenda.
We have to do some type of resolution or to?
But this would be given direction. We had four of us say this, it gives staff direction to go do something and bring back for us to vote on. Well, this would be given direction, we had four of us say, this is, gives, keep staff direction to go do something and bring back for us to vote on.
Uh, you know, what if we did a, you know, let's just try it out for a year, see how if people are taking. It up, you know, um, are utilizing this, uh, the, the letters.
I know that I throw away all the envelopes that I get from every bill because I pay them online, so I'm wasting paper.
We don't send all of them, but yeah, a lot of people are paperless, so not everybody gets a bill, so.
How many people are pa- uh, still get bills, like paper, percentage-wise?
Yeah, and I don't have a good number for that, so again.
That would be interesting to know.
Needs to go on a future agenda item, be discussed and voted upon.
Maybe we should give a discount for going electronic. The forty, the sixty to the hundred dollars a month.
Can we find out if there's four people that say to go do this?
I support Dave, or Councilor Damod.
So we'll bring it back on a future agenda for the council's decision.
And if I can have one last item before we table it, just in case it requires work before we get to the agenda items. Um, my suggestion would be, can the city do some sort of public push to go paperless? And then provide the envelopes for everyone who has not, but can we do some sort of media or whatever or?
We've been doing that for six, seven months, since the summer.
And did it help, did people start going paperless?
Yeah, our numbers continue to improve month by month.
Okay, good, be nice to know the percentage though.
So, so this would only be for the folks who have not.
Correct.
Gone paperless.
You could always put on the envelope, go paperless.
Back end where they lick it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I know there's, there's also the other side of why people aren't paperless and having a computer and blah, 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 so. Anything else, sir?
Um, unfortunately, I have three other things I would like to hit, and like I said, some of this has just been sitting for a couple, couple of months, and we haven't had an opportunity.
They have to come back, great.
One is, um, and I know that we're doing the master plan, but I really would like to see if council has the appetite to. Put disc golf back, so if that's just strat planning or something, like, I feel like. That's something that should be easy for us to figure out how to put that back, and that there was, in my mind, and the answers we got there. That was driven by the community, the fact that it was there in the first place, so, and there's obviously folks that enjoy that sport, so. That's my, my two cents on that, I don't know if others have an opinion, I've seen things fly in, but I said I was gonna bring it up in a meeting, so I am.
I'd like to know how much it costs to put it back, and if it can be put back, because I know that they changed the, the open space there, the way. I think it was to protect the open space, just like the dog park, basically, probably.
Yeah, I, if I could, where the disc golf course was. I, will be an active construction site through the end of twenty twenty-five, so. The individual in the community who wants to put the disc golf course back where it was. Um, you know, it's at least twenty twenty-six spring before that happens. We've explained that before, and that actually was the notification that went out in twenty twenty-one when the city decided. To pull it out for a four lo- four-year-long construction period. That said, um, we have encouraged this individual to participate in the P R L visioning process. So that we can identify, is there, one, is there a community desire for this, but two. Is there a better location in the city, because it's not going in anytime soon where it used to be? Uh, that's at least two years out, so, um, we can certainly have that conversation. Um, I'm not, since it's not gonna open up uh this spring, it would seem to be. Uh, very appropriate for that to continue as part of the P R L visioning conversation.
And I'd like to know if we heard any more from more than two people that used it. I've only heard from two, and I don't see putting and spending a bunch of money on it if there's only two people that care.
I've lived there. In our, that area when it was put in, there isn't a day that we walked the pugs that we didn't see people using it, whatever time of day it was, so. I know it was well-used.
Okay.
Counselor, I mean Mayor Protem.
Um, so, this was put in due to community desire already, right? So.
But it was removed in twenty twenty-one for the construction that's happening in, uh, Long Big Dry Creek.
So, I mean, re, I, I think. We already went through the process to determine that it was something that the community wanted. Um, so I don't know if we need to reevaluate that, um, I don't think. You know, when we say we're pulling something out, we don't really, you know, as a city, we don't really give people a choice to say, gee, can we not do that? So, um, I, I think that it would be helpful to look at, is there anywhere else? That this could be accommodated, even if it's a temporary, um, condition. I don't know if there is a temporary disc golf course solution, um. That we could look at as an option, but having it out there for a couple more years, um, whether. You, you know, going through the visioning process, I mean, we have areas that are not that well-used. Um, you know, so I would be curious to know if there's something we could do sooner than later, you know, um.
If I could provide two quick answers, so I got word that, that we've had contact from three members. Of the public that have brought this to the, the city or the council's attention, so not a lot of community. Vigor, if you will, in the request, um, and I understand, um, Mayor Protem that. That if you're gonna do this, the space required is forty acres, to put in a, uh, eighteen-hole disc golf course. To whatever the appropriate standard is, so there aren't many places, um, in the city where you can do that. So that's why, you know, what the P R L staff is currently doing is, is trying to figure out, is there a better place? But again, the forum for that is this community visioning process. One, is there a desire still from the community to do this, but two, if you're gonna do it, where do you do it, and that way you don't have to remove it anymore.
Well, that's why I was, uh, I would appreciate understanding if there's something that's more temporary, is there a nine-hole? Like, I know that there are some smaller golf courses, um, that can be accommodated, so maybe it's some. I don't know disc golf enough, but it would be nice to have, um, staff weigh in on that if. You know, so that we can, I mean, if you're, I, I don't know what action. You would be hoping for other than it being put back, you know, I, I don't know if we could put it right, right back where it was, but.
The two things that I would say is, that we as a city government in my time have a horrible reputation for people give up because we, they don't, they feel we don't listen. And so, if we wanna continue down that path, great. Um, the other thing that I would say is that. A lot of people probably aren't saying anything because the expectation was it was gonna go back. This was supposed to be a construction project, and I think my concern, as we went through this, and some members of the community have been more vocal about it than others. The answer seems like, hmm, maybe, so, that's, that's my concern, it'd be one thing if it was for sure we're gonna put it back in twenty twenty-six when we're done with the construction. That's not what I'm hearing anymore, and initially, that is what I was hearing. Um, so, that's, that's my, my concern on that, so, we, we can see what, what comes back, but.
Good question?
Yes.
Or comment, my, there's this, this is an issue, right, but. My concern is more so, overall strategically, what are the guidelines? Or, we should have guidelines regarding when we take away something from the community, especially if it was community-driven. I feel like this is a strategic thing, that we need to establish as a council probably during the strategic planning, as to when and how. Who gets to approve that, because if, if this was driven by community survey to put this in the first place, and then we just took it away. You know, the P R L commission, the board, council, et cetera, there should be. A hierarchy of approvals before something like this gets taken away, so I think that's really something we should think about, long-term.
Good point.
And I don't know what the, what the history was, it was twenty twenty-one when the city went through all of, all of that, I would imagine that. Along with those construction project approvals that occurred at that time. You know, that has to come to the council to say, yes, we're gonna do that, so, any feel for that or memory?
What exactly are they doing there for two years, for two more years?
Well, I'd ask Park Trek and Library Director to come up and share, you know, what, what happens over the next. Two years in construction, I know they're doing the reclaimed water, um, holding facility this, this summer, and then we've got. Streambank reserve, or renovations and improvements and things, so.
Yeah, Tomasz Eradomischler and the Director of Parks Recreation Libraries. Um, there is a multi-phase project underway, they're starting with, uh. Digging out the irrigation pond, city, um, park pond, uh, is gonna be relined. So they're gonna deepen it, reline it, um, that's the next phase of work, it'll be. Um, not wonderfully attractive, but it will eventually lead to a very, very useful, uh, irrigation resource for the entire park. Um, then they're gonna be, um, the way it was described to me is, uh, putting back the creek's sinuosity. So it'll be curvy again, and, uh, putting, regrading all of those banks. Uh, new five bri- bridges, new trails, um, both hard, hard trails and soft trails. And then they're creating a, um, pollinator highway, butterfly highway along the trail. Um, with an incredible amount of native plants, trees, shrubs, so the whole sort of. Uh, riparian landscape will be restored, uh, it's gonna be really incredibly attractive, uh. Ecologically biodiverse, uh, lots and lots of flower, wildflowers and pollinators. So it's quite a transformation, really, from what it was before to what we'll be seeing in a matter of a couple of years.
And no place for a disc golf course?
Um, I think that the, the main issue with the disc golf course is the potential conflict between the. People on these paths, using them for other recreational purposes, I don't know if you're familiar with the, the discs that they use, but if they hit you. It hurts a lot, so there, there needs to be some kind of separation between those recreational uses. Um, I've, I've got my staff looking at other options around the city, I think we got some opportunities that we're gonna explore. Um, it probably not forty acres, but perhaps twenty, uh, where we could put in a nine-hole course and you just play it twice, so. There, there's other options that I think are well worth looking at.
Never got any complaints about that, so, in- interesting to hear that, it was never part of the original plan. Mo- moving on, um, my last two things, one, I wanted to, and I emailed about this and said I was gonna bring it up as far as. During the session, and I know session is just starting, um, but in the past, we had got a bill tracker. Um, I know that it was offered up for us to be able to ask, um, Amy Atwood, um, what's going on, but ultimately. It's nice for council to make sure we're on top of what staff is tracking, um, because then we kinda have an idea of what things they're concerned about. And obviously, each of us are pretty ingrained in the community and understand the issues and how they may impact us. Um, so, I don't know the right way to do it, but I feel very disconnected from the process this year. Um, I don't know if maybe there's a, ability to maybe have the mayor and the mayor protem sit in on those calls with staff and report back to us. Um, but that, I think that there's room for us to understand what's going on, especially when we're in meetings. That potentially they may talk about things that the city's looking at, and we don't know that those are things they're tracking. Lastly, I have two things, and these are both out of the community that I wanted to bring up as ideas, and this isn't something for, um, tonight. One was, I was asked about potentially, I don't know if you know who Officer Scott Wagner is, he passed away from cancer a handful of years ago. He was a war veteran, um, I think Iraq war, um, as well as a very, you know, um, respected member of our P D. They did some baseball tournaments for him some years ago, um, but it was asked about potentially naming either like a courtroom. In the new courthouse when it's built, or something to honor him, um, so, you know, ultimately wanted to bring that back to you, and then the other one. Um, came from a community member about, um, honoring, um, former mayor Vi June, for those of you who may or may not know Vi. She was known to, uh, one of her things that really kinda got her on the scene was the March on City Hall over clean water. Um, and so the idea was potentially naming the new water plant after Vi. Um, and so that is something that I wanted to at least bring forward to the council, cuz it was brought to me, um, over the holidays, and. You know, I thought it made a lot of sense, I don't know what that would look like, or how we were gonna name the water plant. Um, but when it was brought up to me, I thought it made a lot of sense considering she's part of that history and why Westminster has the utility that it does. And that's it for me.
Mayor Protem?
Well, I like those latter two ideas, so, um, I'll, I'll try and keep it short, uh, let's see. In, um, with respect to the legislation, uh, tracking, I would be interested in kind of. You know, knowing more of what our stances or how we can be helpful. Um, I have been keeping tabs on the A D U and, um, the accessory dwelling unit. Uh, legislation as well as the transit-oriented communities, just have attended stakeholder meetings, actually spent. Little time last week? I'm like, what the, um, going through and just looking at, um. How the T O C bill would currently kind of affect our Westminster Station area. Um, just trying to understand it more, but I think that would be, um, again, just helpful to have us be a little more engaged and knowledgeable. Um, and for, uh, for my role in Dr. Cog. Uh, I'm nominated to be on the Front Range Passenger Rail Board, so, um, that will hopefully be voted in. Next meeting, which I won't be at. And, uh, I have yet to have my, I've, I have my vision plan meeting tomorrow, um, going to the Northland High School thing, cuz I love. High school students, cuz I have one, and some in the making, um, and then I will be on the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, thing on the twelfth, so, and yes, actually, if you. Both could give me information on the walk on the trail and the, um, bull's house, if that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would love to hear that, okay.
Um, I was gonna ask, and it's, I know it's getting late, but I was gonna ask the three new ones, um, how's your onboarding going? Do you have any suggestions for, um, is it good, is it too fast, too little? I don't know, um, it's obviously changed since I had to go through it, so, um, just, um. Wanted to know your input, and you can send me an email or call me or whatever, I, I just, I have, we haven't. Met that often, and with my surgery and everything, I haven't had a chance to reach out and just ask you that question. I did have my, um, P R N L interview, I talked with Michelle, um, and can I just ask, do we know if the thirteenth is solid yet?
That was actually my question, so Cody had sent out a note and asked the council. We're right now scheduled for April thirteenth for the strategic plan, it's a Saturday. She had asked if, if you were not gonna be able to make it, to let her know, she hasn't heard anything. So I just wanna make sure that everybody's good for April thirteenth, Saturday, so.
Good with that.
I saw that, I'm good.
Councilor Damod, yes, Mayor Protem? Counselor, yes, so, wherever Cody is, we're good, there we are, we're good, okay.
Had A C rep legislative meeting, had to leave early because, um, I'm in my thirty-six days of, um. Rehab for the, for cardiac rehab, and so I come and go to different things, I was glad to hear you went to the. Rocky Flats meeting, as soon as I got out of rehab this morning, he thought they were still gonna be going, so I tried, and it said. The meeting was no longer, so I emailed and said, did the meeting, um, end? Um, quicker than you thought, his response was, um, sorry you didn't make it, so. I don't know what time it ended, but thank you for that, and you did send the, um, PowerPoint, which I sent out to everybody so you can look at. Um, and just update, um, I'm five weeks out with open heart surgery, I'm doing well, I still don't have my stamina. Um, but working on it, and, um, I have, I'm plugged into a heart monitor. So if that phone goes off, it's, it'll just tell me to do something. Um, but, um, I get rid of that February twenty-ninth, they're just looking to see if I have had any more A F I Bs. I haven't to this point, but they were trying to get me to take, um, some other medication, and I said no. So I said, we need data, so we're gathering it, and as of today. And as of today, there has been no more AFIB except those two instances. Um, my cancer stuff came back. Um, I was um ready for the blood test and um the other treatment. I get uh the end of January. And because of all of the things they did between surgery and the cancer stuff and making sure everything went together, I was pretty concerned because I just didn't know what was gonna happen. But um as I've told you, I started at eight eighty-six with a cancer marker. I've been down the last two months in the three nineties, and this one showed a one eighty-two. So I'm going the right direction, um everything's working, and I can't thank my doctors enough for all that they've been doing, so. That's me, that's it. Let's get on with city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, councilors. Um, we'll run through a few uh slides here, but first of all, just wanna remind everybody, since the mayor uh brought up the onboarding. So tomorrow evening for new councilors and certainly anybody else who'd like to come back and give it another swing. Um, we have tours and topics um which uh will begin. Uh, we'll be talking about the finance department, and so that will um start out right here. Uh, tomorrow evening from five to six fifteen uh PM. Uh, and again, the topic is finance, and our deputy city manager and CFO, Larry Dorr, will be hosting that event. Uh, so next slide. Uh, some city updates, um first of all, uh near and dear to those folks in uh countryside. But uh Kettner's uh, Kettner Lake's water valve failed um back in uh October. Um, so they had a uh routine state inspection and uh um the slide gate. Um, when uh, when they tested that, it uh failed, uh which allowed water to uh essentially be released from Kettner Lake. Um, we were able to put in a temporary plug, um which has held since then. Uh, we went back with the uh, the company that we have a contract with to make the repairs, inland marine. Um, and uh we brought forward to the council in December um a contract to repair that slide gate um overflow mechanism, which is uh underwater. It's not something you just kinda make happen on the outside. Um, they uh have been working to design and fabricate, fabricate the new slide gate screen. Um, and then uh ordering the appropriate slide gate to make that underwater repair. Um, right now, it looks they're projecting to be back in April um to make those repairs. Um, and again, um if you're not familiar, Kettner Lake is a stormwater detention area. And so the stormwater uh through uh spring and early summer um will return and fill the lake. But there's no spring or anything like that that fills that. It's simply stormwater. Next slide. Uh, municipal courthouse project, we're starting our community outreach. And so um with our drinking water facility, we created a community advisory team. Um, we're gonna do the same thing for the municipal courthouse. Um, and so we'll begin the outreach effort to recruit some participants. Uh, again, that community advisory team will be made up of neighborhood stakeholders. So residents, businesses, and any nonprofits that operate in and around um the municipal courthouse. Uh, it will provide valuable input um into the design process and, you know, what the campus looks like, some of the amenities, what the buildings uh look like, and some of those materials. Um, and that first CAT meeting is scheduled for February twenty-eighth. And if the council remembers prior to the Christmas holiday, uh the council approved Councilor DeMott being uh the council's representative on that uh community advisory team. And then if you wanna learn anymore about that project, if you go to our city website slash municipal court project, you can certainly do that and kinda learn where we're at, but uh that project continues to move forward. Next slide. Um, so speaking of the uh uh drinking water facility, um we've got a revised draft environmental assessment report um for that project. And it will be available for community review and feedback, and that uh is already underway here from the end of January. And it will run throughout the month of February. Um, the original draft EA was published and posted for community feedback um this past fall, so September to October. Um, based upon that, we've had some updates to include some adjustments to utility alignments and locations. Um, and if anybody is interested in reviewing that environmental assessment, um there are certainly hard copies here at City Hall and at College Hill Library. And then a uh a digital copy is online at our city website slash drinking water project, along with all other things associated with that project, but that's moving forward. Next slide. Uh, Westy Winds, this is a great one, so um some of you may be familiar with uh our police department, who operates a program called Raising Men and Raising Women Program Outreach. Uh, so we have a senior police officer, his name's Charles Gonzalez, and uh other school resource officers. They run this program, and specifically the lawn maintenance program during the summer. And so we get high school kids that volunteer to mow lawns of veterans and citizens here in the community that may be in need. Um, Charles has built a relationship with uh Mr. John Carlson, who's pictured on the right, um along with his family. Um, John is battling cancer. He's currently in the hospital. And so uh uh Charles and Sergeant Richard Salazar um stopped by to visit him in the hospital. You can see that picture um on the lower right, um and uh John remains in good spirits and uh certainly on the road to recovery. And so a great way to connect um our police officers with members of the community, those in need, um and to do a great service uh to our community. So con- uh congrats to uh Officer uh Gonzalez and our school resource officers. Next slide. Some things to know, uh tomorrow night, uh the city is hosting Confronting Mental Health and Substance Abuse: A Path Forward Through Collaboration. Um, that's right here in council chambers from six thirty to seven thirty PM. Counselor Azadi will be the uh the facilitator or moderator um for a nine-member panel. Nine-member panel of experts um that will talk and inform the community. Um, we will uh stream that, we'll broadcast that, we'll record that for anybody who's not able to watch it or attend uh tomorrow evening. So um just getting to better understand the difficult problem set. Uh, Wednesday, seven to eight thirty, Special Permits and License Board Meeting, um happens right here in City Council Chambers. And our next uh city council meeting uh will be Monday, February twelfth, the week from tonight, beginning at six thirty, um right here in City Council Chambers. And just as a, another plug for the onboarding, we've got um in post-meeting next week is the um land use one oh one discussion. So um very appropriate to get that one done uh upfront sooner rather than later. Next slide. No information-only items this evening. Next slide. And as always, we encourage folks to contact us. My phone number is listed there. Email is listed there. You can follow us on social media, so like us on Facebook, check us out on Instagram. Um, you can uh 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 visit us on X and ring our bell at next door. But as always, our goal is to be accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. And any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Questions? I forgot to tell everybody, get your green sheets into Evan. Okay, presentations. First one up.
All right, so we'll have uh Mr. McConnell, Planning Director, come forward um and start us out. And this is a concept plan for uh West one oh eighth Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard. Mr. McConnell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and City Councilors. John McConnell, interim planning manager here to provide you with tonight's presentation. Uh, I would like to uh begin the presentation by providing you with the uh overview of the concept plan review, as I did at the last concept plan review hearing. Uh, maybe just one more time with the new council members in the community that that are just getting used to this process. So I'll start with that, and then we'll jump right into the uh concept plan review. So the purpose of the concept plan review is to provide the city council with the opportunity to learn about a proposed development projects, project at its conceptual stage. Um, also to a- to ask questions of the applicant and to provide informal, high-level feedback to the applicant. Benefits to the city council include gaining knowledge of projects at an early stage and the ability to provide initial feedback to the applicant. The minute, the benefit gained by the applicant by receiving this feedback is obtaining a better understanding of the city council's initial concerns before investing substantial time and money into technical design and plan preparation. The focus of a concept plan review is generally related, related to strategic plan alignment, comprehensive plan compliance, proposed land uses, general site design, and neighborhood compatibility. Due to its preliminary nature, the concept plan may not identify all potential issues that may arise in future technical development review cycles. Concept plan reviews do not involve a public hearing, and no official action is taken by city council in conjunction with the concept plan review process, and no approvals of any type are granted. Concept plan reviews are only required for development proposals that require the approval by city council of a PDP or an ODP or an associated rezoning or comp plan amendment. Additionally, all original Uplands ODPs require concept plan review uh because those, those applications require city council review. And any ODP involving a multifamily land use requires city council's approval and therefore requires a concept plan review. A concept plan review takes place after the completion of a pre-application review in accordance with city policy and prior to the submittal of any type of technical development review application. And what you're seeing here, although it might not be extremely legible to you, is our development review process. And this is uh posted online on the planning division's website for uh citizens and developers to understand the entire process. Public notice for concept plan reviews is required in accordance with Section eleven five thirteen of the Westminster Municipal Code. It includes mailed notice, newspaper notice, and signed postings. The applicant is responsible for the costs associated with the notification process, including the construction, placement, and removal of the posting signs. Notification occurs at least ten days in advance of the meeting. And the posted signs are required to be removed within seventy-two hours of the conclusion of the meeting. So this concludes my overview of the concept plan review process. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them at this time, or we can jump right into the, tonight's concept plan review.
I see no questions, so the concept plan review tonight is for West one hundred and eighth Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard Annexation Development Proposal. This is a concept plan review. It is not a hearing on the development application. Its purpose is to allow city council to learn about a proposed project in its beginning stages and provide feedback to the applicant on the city council's general impressions of the proposal. In accordance with the Westminster Municipal Code, concept plan reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-applica- pre-application review for a proposed project, but before staff perform technical review for the project. Technical review, which involves an official application for an ODP, PDP, or ad- amendment thereto, will occur only after the applicant chooses to move a project forward after its concept plan. As part of our review process tonight, city staff will provide a brief introduction. Then the applicant or its representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. City council may then ask questions of the applicant and provide applicant feedback on the proposal. Exclamation part, part here. City council comments on the proposal are gratuitous in nature and are not binding on city council, the planning commission, city staff, or the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight's concept plan review is for the one hundred and eighth Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard Annexation Proposal. And this concept plan review will be somewhat unique among concept plan reviews. Typically, you would be reviewing and commenting on a site-specific development plan. In this case, staff has performed a pre-application on a site-specific development plan. And in fact, over the last seven, eight years, the city staff have had many conversations, consultations, uh and pre-application reviews with this property owner and previous property owners on this, on this property. It's the intention at this time of the applicant for tonight's concept plan review to eventually proceed to city council with a request for annexation, a zoning to PUD, and a associated preliminary development plan, but not a site-specific development plan. The reason for that, and the applicant can uh provide you with a better explanation, is um is that this property, over the years, in our many discussions, staff's many discussions with uh applicants and developers, being outside of the city limits and seeking city services, requires several steps as outlined in the agenda memo. And those steps take a lot of time and resources to to do. And many developer interests were were kind of turned away because of the amount of time that it would take. So the current property owner would like to go ahead and um annex the property and entitle it so that the property, entitle it in accordance with our comprehensive plan. And so the property would be more marketable and immediately develop, and be less of a lift for the developer in the end. So I wanted to start by covering that, because I know this will be a little bit different from what you, what you're used to. So the location here is on the northwest corner of West one hundred and eighth Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard. And as I stated earlier, this is not in the city of Westminster. It's currently in unincorporated Jefferson County. And it's uh shown here in red. The property, if annex or, let me uh describe this a little bit better, is currently in Jefferson County. Uh, if it were to be annexed into the city of Westminster, it would be required to be zone plan unit development. Our city code requires anything over two acres be zone plan unit development. Uh, the comprehensive plan, the twenty forty plan incorporates this into the land use uh map. And the per- the land use that should be assigned to this, according to the twenty forty comp plan, would be the employment flex with light industrial uses allowed. So any property that was previously designated as flex light industrial in the twenty thirteen plan carried over into employment flex with those light industrial land uses allowed.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned earlier, we reviewed a pre-application back in uh twenty twenty-one. And even prior to that, in twenty nineteen, we reviewed a separate pre-application uh with a different property owner. And um this pre-application submittal included a couple of flex office warehouse buildings, drive-ous parking stalls, and associated landscaping. The flex office warehouse building concept was intended to be a non-livable, flexible space that may be used by future o- o- owners in numerous ways, including office and storage uses. The last pre-application review for this concept plan was conducted in November of twenty twenty-one. Staff also conducted a less formal review and consultation in late twenty twenty-two for a more specific concept described as a personal warehouse, which is sometimes referred to as an off-site garage in in some municipalities. At the time of the review, the property was governed by the previous comprehensive plan land use designation of flex light industrial. Among other things, staff advised the applicant that the personal warehouse con- concept did not align with the expectations of that land use designation, which was intended to allow the development of flexible spaces designed to accommodate primary employers in the areas of research and development labs, technology, medical, and professional offices. And the twenty forty comprehensive plan designates this property as employment flex, which carries over a similar land use expectation. Based on this direction, it's staff's understanding that the applicant will pursue a development that is in alignment with the current comprehensive plan. Notice was provided for the concept plan review tonight. The applicant posted two signs on the property and mailed a hundred and fifteen notice letters. The notice was also posted in Westminster Window, and all required notification took place at least ten days prior to the hearing, to the meeting, sorry. For the property to be used and developed in accordance with the applicant's concept plan, the property would need to be annexed into the city of Westminster. Comprehensive plan land use designation of employment flex would need to be established in accordance with the plan. The property would also be required to be zone PUD and a PDP, and ultimately, an ODP. The property would also be required to be zoned PUD and a PDP, and ultimately, an ODP would need to be approved. And additional details provided in the agenda memo. And this concludes the staff's presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that you have, but the applicant does have a presentation as well, and they, and they're prepared to provide that to you.
Any questions?
What is the demand for this? I mean, I've heard of demand for, for housing. I've heard of demand for entertainment. I realize this is near the airport, so we might want a more industrial facility. But is this something that the city, is this a need? I haven't heard of it. I guess I'm lacking that information, yes.
So I don't have the benefit of having our economic development staff here with us. But having worked with them, I do understand that the flexible employment spaces are, are premium in, in Westminster and other municipalities. There's a high demand for spaces like the Walnut Creek Business Park that's on Wadsworth Boulevard and 108th Avenue just down the street from this. And that's been very successful, and there seems to be a demand for this.
So I'm not, what is the cost to annex? Like, do we have to provide sewer to it? Is, is it already there? Water, all that?
Well, so generally speaking, development pays its own way in Westminster. So the cost to proceed through the process to annex, to get zoned, to go through the public hearing, the development review process is all paid for by the developer. The developer would have to pay the applicable water tap fees. They would have to pay for any infrastructure that is needed for the development of the site and any off-site infrastructure required to accommodate the development of the site. So again, very generally speaking, development does pay its own way.
I see no other questions.
Hello, hello, council. My name is Dan Kraus with Raptor Civil Engineering, here with Teresa and Peter Leiter, the owners of the property. John, thank you for the very, very thorough intro. I don't have a ton of information that John did not already cover. So I'll just quickly go through the slides and see if we can save ourselves a little bit of time. So like John mentioned, the project is located off of the northwest corner of 108th and Wadsworth Boulevard, next to the Green Knolls and My Business Park subdivisions. Also, like John mentioned, the property is currently surrounded by the city of Westminster. And so this is a remnant piece of Jefferson County, unincorporated Jefferson County. So this project is proposing to annex into the city of Westminster with the PUD zoning that you can also see is surrounding this site currently with Westminster. Like John mentioned, there is a, a string of history with this project. The most recent proposal was done in the fall of 21, looking to annex with a PDP and an ODP. The project has since changed direction, so we would like to proceed now with just the annexation and the preliminary development plan. And then the goal of those two, the annexation and the PDP, would be to get this remnant piece of Jefferson County into the city of Westminster so that it can accommodate research and development labs, technology, medical, and flex industrial. And then again, this proposal does not include an ODP at this time. That closes it. Thank you.
Questions?
I'll see, sorry.
Go ahead.
One?
Yep.
Very high level. Why was it not included earlier? What was the holdup before?
Why was not, what not included?
Uh, this parcel of land.
I can't answer that question.
Just wondered.
I might be able to defer that one to John.
So I've been with the city since 2015, and it's never been incorporated, obviously. It's been, as stated, and sort of an, almost an island in Jefferson County. In fact, there, there's a lot of Jefferson County jurisdiction land in that area. You might be familiar with the Frightmare com- compound and, and some of the surrounding lands. So it's a little bit spotty where the city is and where Jeffco is there. But this is just one of those pieces of land that is, is never proceeded to development. And as I said earlier, what I've come to know over the years with dealing with development interests is it's just, it's just a really heavy lift and time-consuming for the end developer to do all the legwork to get this into the city and get it, and get it entitled for development. So, uh, staff does believe this is the right step for the property owner. It should make the rest of the process more efficient for the end developer.
Thank you.
Green Knolls was originally Jefferson County, and they allowed the building to happen. And then they were annexed in. So I've always thought of it because you see where Green Knolls is, and then there's sort of a cliff. And then where some of the development has gone, and then this one piece. So I've always figured Green Knolls didn't need those pieces, so they weren't sold with Green Knolls, but they still were Jefferson County and.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just recalling actually that, like, remember there were some concerns about, I believe, traffic on 108th and just wanted staff to be able to address how that would be integrated into the development review process and how the surrounding residents and anyone with concerns would be able to kind of still have a voice.
Absolutely, absolutely. So after tonight, the next steps for the applicant would be to submit for technical review of PDP. They would also submit the associated annexation, rezoning applications, and, and associated fees. We would go through the first round of the technical development review of the PDP. And then the applicant would be required to hold a neighborhood meeting, or we call them project meetings today. And they would provide the same notification that was provided tonight and invite all concerned citizens into a meeting to express their concerns or thoughts on the project. In most cases, an applicant will take the feedback and incorporate it into their development plans. In this case, the property does a butt green knolls. There are resident, single-family residential homes nearby. And, and I know from experience working with the development adjacent to this, there are some sensitivities there because these are two very different land uses. There's some elevation change there, too. And so these are all things that I know staff's aware of, and I do believe the property owner is aware of. And they'll be at the forefront of, of how we collectively proceed with this application, so.
Anyone else? Do you have anything else? Any? Um, as stated at the outset of the concept review plan, council comments are gratuitous and do not bind or obligate the applicant, city staff, planning commission, or city council to any course of action or future decision.
I would like to thank everyone for their time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I will close the concept review plan portion of this meeting. Next one up is potential amendments to sign code.
All right, Mr. Altsberger, go ahead.
I didn't even see you.
I, I was lurking in the shadows. Working in the city's best interests. There's no rest for the weary.
Sort of like the groundhog.
That, that's right. That's right. No shadow. No shadows. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, City Council, Mayor W. City Manager Andrews, Attorney Frankel. Here this evening to seek your direction related to potential amendments to the sign code. The reason we're here, during, over the last several months, there were some challenges and concerns raised. And more specifically, at the September 25th City Council meeting during public hearing, there was a request made to bring this item back for discussion with city council to, to seek some direction. Before you this evening, we really have four policy considerations for you. And of course, we're open to other items that might be on your collective minds. The first item is a question on allowing temporary banners on residential lots. The second is eliminating advanced approval of temporary signs through, through a permitting process. The third question is maximum size of temporary banners. And the fourth item is maximum square footage allowance for temporary banners. And just want to be clear before we really get going, all we're talking about this evening, from, from our perspective, are temporary signs. Of course, if, if you have things on your mind, on permanent signs, you know, let us know. We're, we're open to other items that you might want to discuss. So a little bit of history, the city's brief recent history is, is on the screen here related to the sign code. In 2015, there was a Supreme Court decision that was, was pretty impactful from the municipalities across the country. The main premise of the Reed versus Gilbert decision had to do with content neutrality. So whatever you consider this evening, a pole star is maintaining content neutrality. Or in other words, the city cannot set some rules for political signs, set rules for business signs, set rules for religious signs, that, that content neutrality has to transcend. And that's just, that's something that, that we, we have to be grounded in. So first, first policy question here is related to allowing one temporary banner for low and medium-density residential properties. Right now, that is not allowed. And where, where we saw some concerns was during the most recent campaign election season, where there were some highly visible properties, where there were desires to place banners, but they were technically zoned residential. So per the zoning and per the sign code, the banners were not allowed. Smaller signs are allowed, but not the banners. So first consideration is yay or nay on, on allowance of, of banners on residential properties. The second consideration for you is eliminating advanced approval for temporary signs. And of course, for permanent signs, from, from a, from a staffing perspective, we're not suggesting any changes for permanent signs, permitting, review. I mean, it's, it's important to make sure that, that those are meeting, ODPs, they're, they're meeting, meeting zoning regulations. But, but this is the second consideration this evening. The third has to do with quantity allowances, and apologize, there's, there's a lot going on here, but wanted to at least have something at a glance for you on the slide. What, what we're offering this evening for your consideration would be an increase in temporary banner allowances. What's on the top is what's in our existing code. And what's below is what a potential amendment might look like. And this is just something we're, we're offering as a, a little bit more allowance, but not significantly more, but just, just a starting place, if you will. But if, if, you know, just, just for a quick eyeball comparison, top is existing. Bottom is what an update might look like. And then the fourth question has to do with square footage. Once again, the top is existing square footage allowed. The bottom is a potential change. And, and just want to emphasize Westminster Municipal Code does allow by right up to five temporary signs or banners, six square feet or less. So that's a two-by-three, you know, so that, that's, that's by right. That has nothing to do with the temporary sign regulations here. And, and with that, that allowance of the five smaller signs or temporary banners, if, if you have a larger, larger linear footage on your lot, there, there's an additional six-foot, six-square-foot sign allowed per twenty feet of frontage over one hundred feet. So, but, but the, but the main thing with the banners, that, that use by right are two-by-three signs, not anything larger than that. So that's, that's what I have for you this, this evening. Once again, this is, these are the, the policy considerations. And I'll, I'll leave this slide up for, for your questions and discussions, just, just to, where we're, we're seeking your guidance based on staff interactions and what we've heard. These, these proposed amendments are intended to address the concerns that we received over the last several months. But, but we'll leave it in your capable hands to give us, give us guidance. And once again, per item five, if, if there are other items that are of, of interest that are not, weren't covered in this brief presentation, I'm ready to receive your feedback and interests.
I'll start with the number two, the permitting process. If we remove that, how are we tracking signage, or are we tracking signage? And maybe we're not tracking signs already when they're supposed to be removed. But I think the only thing we would need to track is when and if they're being removed on, in a timely manner. And so if we remove that, how do we knew who to pursue to do that?
That's a good question, Councilor Carmelia. So we rely with sign enforcement right now, and in the spectrum of items that code enforcement focuses on, primarily the priorities are nuisances and higher impact issues. We do sign code enforcement largely based on complaints, but also on observations. So each of the beat officers, you know, take note. I mean, right-of-way, I want to make it clear, with any signage, right-of-way, city right-of-way is a bright line. Signs are simply not allowed, and we, we will remove signs or work with private property owners where there's a legal path forward to, to move things back within private property if those signs would be allowed. But yeah, I guess the, the intent of the permit and sticker process, there was, there was great intent to do exactly what, what you're asking about, to, to better track per our code for temporary signs. The way allowances work, if, if you have a sign up for one duration, you, you can have it up for ninety days once per year. Or you can do forty days, three times per year, with fourteen days between. As the operations manager for community development, I'm just going to be straight up with you, and this, this is not, the juice isn't worth the squeeze on, on very close monitoring of this. However, between our beat officers and, and our residents and businesses and complaints we receive, what, what essentially would happen is we would create a case, and that would start the shot clock. Now, might folks get extra time to have these signs up because we're not documenting until we create a case versus a permitting process? Yes. But weighing, weighing the cost-benefit? But, but that's something where we're, we're open to get your, your, your direction this evening.
As a follow-up to the permitting question, were we making any significant income annually on this? No.
Councilor Isadi?
I think others have hands up before me.
Sorry. Oh, get him. Go ahead.
Me?
Okay.
It's Mr. Altsberger. Guess my email's about sign clutter. Sure he knows. I do actually care about the, the visual aesthetics of our community. And I, and I do have concern over expanding the allowance particularly for temporary signage and reducing our ability to manage it through our code. So I, and as a result, so these are my thoughts on each one of these. I understand that we would like to have more ability on residential properties to allow those banners. So I think that, you know, I could get behind number one. Regarding number two, I am hesitant to reduce our, our management of temporary signs. I think, uh, it, to me, I feel like it is a slippery slope. And the more that we allow, you know, the less opportunity we have to, to make sure we're able to remove them. I know that there was a, as I'm recalling from the conversation in September, there was a concern about sort of a, a barrier for those who are pursuing temporary election signs to have to go through that permits process. I am wondering. I am wondering, since there are multiple types of signage involved with number two, that perhaps we limit it to something that is more often, you know, if it's a banner, then perhaps it's that versus other types of signage. So, if we, you know, let's just not completely disband our ability. But if there's something that we're trying to specifically address, let's just specifically address that. Number three, I think is just too much. You know, there's, I can't remember what you had on that change. But I think that's a lot of signage per lot. Someone will have to jog my memory as to, did, you know, if we asked for the ability to have more signs per lot. So, perhaps there's a middle ground on that one. And then number four regarding the, can you go to the other? Oh, yeah. I'm truly trying to understand this one. I mean, this one seems like we're certainly taking the opportunity to allow banners that perhaps we've seen a need for in other areas. I feel like we often have temporary banners of a larger scale on, you know, apartment buildings, new office buildings, when they're trying to lease up or et cetera. So, I'm not sure how much we actually need to have them on the site itself. And I feel like these are rather large in scale. So, again, I would be less inclined to expand our ability for such large banners on a site. So, if there's a middle ground, again, with respect to, you know, number and size, but holy cow, if you have something that size and you get able to do it every hundred feet on a site, that's a little tacky. So, that's, that's where I'm at.
Counselor Azadi?
Can you go back to the list, please? So, I think that, you know, I think everyone knows that I believe government should be involved in lots of things than we are today. But this is one area where I think the juice is not worth the squeeze, as you said earlier. But generally, this is private property that we're talking about. And we don't really enforce, I mean, I'm sure there's complaints, but no one's enforcing this, especially during the campaign season. It's, take government out of this. I think let people do what they want to do on their private property. I don't think this is unnecessary. So, I say yes to all of that, right? I would even go further because I don't think this is a big deal to put staff resource and time into, especially if we're not really enforcing this anyway. It's something we should take government out of. The aesthetics piece, it makes sense. But we shouldn't be dictating how someone wants to, what they want to do on their private property.
Do you have a UDC?
I have to agree with.
Sure.
Just saying.
I have to agree with Counselor Azadi on that. The only thing I would say is 90 days. I don't like the 40 days and the 14 between. I like 90 days.
Mr., I didn't hear what you had to say.
We do have a uniform development code that, a unified development code that we do actually get quite involved in what happens on private property. That's our whole development review process. We do try and maintain signage. Signage is a big piece of what makes a community have some level of ability, yes, to have signage, but to control the amount and so that we can actually see buildings and not just signs. So, we can, you know, so, so I, I wouldn't just paper the moon on, on that one.
But I think we should just align to that. Why, why, why take it further? If there are basic baseline standards, then.
We have them, so I don't know why we're changing them, outside of, I think, targeted reasons, but, sorry.
I think it's just too much.
I think 50 is just too small, actually. Hundred, maybe, if we want to compromise, but not 50. I mean, I know people that were cutting their signs and putting them up cut so they didn't have to permit. It wasn't me, but it were.
I, I agree with Counselor Azadi.
So, I'm going to be the historian here because I was here when they passed this. And I got to say, I, and I know some of my colleagues who are no longer sitting here. When we brought this back up, had the same frustration that they feel like it missed the mark. And I think maybe if some of us were better at, at area math, maybe we would have been able to head this off. Because if you go back to those conversations when this was brought up to us, we had a lot of the same concerns about people's private property, freedom of speech, you know, the things that, and I could go beyond political science, think about our garage sales, community garage sales. Those banners are all technically violating this. Quite frankly, the ones the city's put up for temporary stuff, are we permitting our own? I mean, the, the, I understand the, the reason we wanted to avoid banners sent around forever. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with it being temporary. I do kind of have a problem with it permitting it, which makes it difficult to make it temporary, which was a conversation that was brought up at that time. But we kind of used me as the gold standard back then about what we wanted to be allowed, being somebody who's had a lot of banners during campaign season. And I think the intent was, no matter who the candidate was, we wanted to make sure that we weren't infringing on people's freedom of speech when it came to campaigns, understanding there are, there's a flip side to that because we have to be uniform when it comes across the board. We can't just say political signs. I have to give kudos to the Wu-Tang Forever sign. That's, if we could give everybody one of those to put up, I'd be on board with that. But, you know, that was kind of what we had said back then. So, I think in the, your, your comment about we're not doing anything, there were actually candidates who did get letters this last election cycle saying, hey, you're violating this rule. And they were kind of caught off guard. And, you know, I wasn't in this last election, but I, I know that they were caught off guard because that was something that was allowed. That particular property owner gave them permission. That property owner got a note from the city saying, hey, you're in violation. Then that property owner contacted those candidates. And I think in some instances, paid the permitting fee. I don't think that was ever what counsel at the time, when we approved this, thought that that was the road that we were going to go down. For, for me, you know, I'm kind of in between. Like, I understand what Mayor Protem Romella is saying as far as like, again, I think that there needs to be that line where we're not, you know, in perpetuity letting people. I will tell you, just even from a candidate perspective, there's a lot of times where I'll see signs that are there that aren't cleaned up. Sometimes people just don't notice because they get blown down in a field. And you go walk out in a field, you see a two-year-old campaign sign. You know, so I don't know what the right solution is, but I, I am in favor of the changes because I do think that we, I think we had some unintended consequences of the fact that we were thinking bigger banners were going to be allowed temporarily in a lot of different instances. At the time, it was in the middle of a campaign when we talked about this. So, I think there was a, a feeling like, hey, well, what does that mean for me if I'm out campaigning? That's, that, that could potentially be a lot. Like, if, like, for me, for example, I think I had 40 banners out. That's a substantial amount of effort to go permit 40 different banners with 40 different property owners.
And expensive.
The, yeah, I mean, it's an additional expense. But, I mean, when it comes down to it for me, whether it's my signs or somebody else's signs, to me, that's a freedom of speech, especially during a campaign. And I understand that means that we have to make variances for other signs. And that's, that's fine because some of those things, when you think about it over the last two years, how many different signs do you see in somebody's yard making some sort of different stance on, on a, on a topic? I mean, that has become, you know, especially through COVID, where that was people's avenue to be able to say anything from happy birthday to, you know, what they agreed with or disagreed with over the last handful of years. So, I certainly don't want government coming in and hampering somebody's ability to speak their mind on their private property to a reasonable level. Like, I don't disagree with that, especially depending on, you know, HOAs and, and that kind of stuff. So, there's, there's a, a line to it. But, you know, I think that for some period of time, it's reasonable for people to have banners or whatever else out, whether it be for business reasons or for political reasons, because, hey, they want you to know that they like Wu-Tang. So, that's my two cents on it.
Can I get clarity on four? I mean, does that mean per line item four? So, does line item four mean for one banner increasing it? Or does that mean for several banners, you can only have that amount of square footage of banners on the property?
It's, it's banners per lot.
Got it.
So, so it's, it's, it's.
So, all the banners together can't be more than 600?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, and I, I guess the only thing that like concerns me when we talk about that, think about this next year, like outside of city politics, like there are going to be how many different people on like a presidential year from congressional candidates to state house, state senate, you know, commissioners? That, like, where's the line of, of which candidates you get to put on your private property to say you're going to support? So, I mean, it's a lot to think through, you know, and kind of my concern when we start limiting stuff beyond, you know, period of time.
I guess my follow-up question is, what I don't know, I wish I had some examples in front of me. What I don't know is, were those rules being followed in the last campaign season? Because I know some property areas were quite large with the banners. And they seemed, and they had like three or four of them, and they, they were already enormous. And so, if we're, if that was 100 square feet, then what is 600?
It was supposed to be 50.
I think it was if they got reported, am I wrong? Like, if somebody reported them, then there might be follow-up.
Correct. We, we're largely, there were enforcement actions largely complaint-based, as Counselor Ireland stated. There, never underestimate individuals' creativity. But by simply cutting an, a macro sign into portions, you could be in compliance with that allotment of, so, so, you know, we, we saw, we saw some creativity.
I don't really think we should have to do that.
Yeah, there, there wasn't anything from, from, from our humble vantage point that was, that was especially egregious. But, but there were some challenges. So, this, this, this isn't an easy issue, you know, it's, it's trying to strike that balance. And, and, you know, it is a good question on the care and tending. And I just, I wanted to offer, so as a team building with, with my crew, we, we've done an annual event called the Spring Sign Rodeo, where, you know, I buy pizza and we go, a lot of it's right-of-way stuff. But, but we, we, it's sort of a spring cleaning in regards to perhaps weathered, torn, haggard, temporary signs. So, it's not everything, but I can give you my pledge this evening that we'll keep that tradition going. Code Enforcement Supervisor Logan Morley told me he's, he's fully on board. So, so we can keep that going. And, and like I said, I mean, we'll, we'll create cases and work these, and our, our staff does. It's just, there'll, there'll be a little lag with not having a permitting process. But, you know, everything in this hundreds, or no, it's only 78-page sign regulations, everything related to permanent signs and unified development code, all that stays the same. You know, all we're talking about this evening are just the temporary signs. But, get it, it's, it's a game of trade-offs.
Thank you for doing that cleanup.
To make one point, the wards will probably cut down the amount of signs that you will need to cover your area.
That's a good point. Depending on.
They're elected at large.
Unless you're at large, but if you're in an area, it would cut it down.
Oh, the rabbit holes, never-ending.
Okay, should we go one by one on them to see where we're at, or?
Um, just listening to y'all, I have four votes of support for each of the four items. So, we can proceed if you're comfortable with that. And then the next step would be working with City Attorney's Office on the formal Counselors Bill Amendment that, that you would all act on at a regular council meeting.
Okay. And right-of-way, that isn't one of these signs, 112th and Marshall, the signs are coming up for, it's on the north side by the street light that says, because it's dead end coming out of the neighborhood. It just says, we'll install fences. And if there's one there, I know if I drove all the way down 112th and probably Westminster Boulevard, there'll be more, but I haven't been in those directions.
We'll, we'll, we'll get that, we'll get that on the radar. Mayor Protem has our, our beat officer of the north busy with, with our perhaps most troublesome corridor with illegal signs.
Okay, if you've got your marching orders, thank you for being here tonight, and we'll move on.
Want to do a break, Mayor, or you want to keep going?
Do we need a break? I don't see anybody jumping up and down.
Okay, good. Well, Mr. Altsberger, you're back up again.
I'm sorry, you're all stuck with me for, for one more item. But I'll do my best to, to, to be brief. So, the, the second item, I'm here to speak with you this evening, is related to occupancy standards and seeking your direction on proposed amendments to occupancy standards. So, this is also a city council follow item. Last year, during the policymaking process for short-term rentals, understandably, occupancy was a key policy consideration. And we, we explored different avenues with that. And at the time, the, the former council requested that we, we return to try to get continuity across our code as it relates to occupancy. So, this evening, there are really three policy questions I have for you where, where we're seeking your guidance. One is related to the definition of family. The second is our current up-to-four unrelated persons language. And the third is whether or not we should consider the latest international occupancy standard per the International Code Council and the IPMC, which is the International Property Maintenance Code. So, our general recommendation, or my general recommendation, is that objective life safety standards are a good thing. On the left is our existing Westminster Municipal Code as it relates to habitable floor space and bedrooms. And on the right is the, the latest updated guidance through the International Code Council and the International Property Maintenance Code. This is the bellwether for jurisdictions across the country, across the world, as it relates to, to building life safety. So, you, you'll see similarity, but, but a little bit of different there, difference there. And, and, but, but all, all of this language is about life safety and, and really think that that's the, the most solid position for the city in considering this issue. Now, as we, we talk about occupancy and if city council wants to consider potential adjustments around occupancy, I just want to remind everyone about existing ongoing protections in Westminster Municipal Code in regards to life safety and, and potential overcrowding. I think Dave Downing is in this photo somewhere. So, we, what you see on, on, on the screen here is a variety of zoning controls that we have. Last year, I want to give credit to Senior Code Enforcement Officer Rachel Patterson and our Code Compliance Coordinator, Mark Behrens. Each of them independently was successful in enforcing an illegal boarding house case, separate cases in the city. One of them was in Legacy Ridge, if you can believe it. So, I, I, I feel very good about our stance to work towards compliance because boarding houses are commercial use. And, and a couple straits zoned areas, they're allowed, but they are not a use that, that belongs in residential areas. You can have roommates, but you can't operate a boarding house. So, so as we consider, as you consider occupancy here, density schedules, maximum square footage, minimal lot areas, setbacks, you know, there, there are a lot of other zoning controls that help control life safety and the built environment. So, recommendation number one would be for the city to move from a definition on its books, from formal families to functional families. And what you see on, on the screen here is just an example from, from another jurisdiction of a functional family definition. And once again, I want to stress, this would not condone and allow boarding houses. This would simply look at, you know, there, there are different definitions of what. This would simply look at, you know, there there are different definitions of what comprises a family and. And I recall back to our um policy discussions on short term rentals and I know um you know. S- s- some of you were here, some of you weren't here, but but it was a kind of a. An interesting thing to reflect on for all of us is should the city be in the business of defining what a family is? The second recommendation would remove the subjective. Up to four unrelated persons language that exists in the current code. With a more objective defensible standard based on life safety, overcrowding, sanitation. Public health and that would be what we have e- either either or, what we have in our existing code, which is. Old international residential code language or the most updated IPMC International Property Maintenance Code. And which leads to three, our recommendation would be that we do adopt the latest ICC standard. Uh which would be the the uh twenty twenty one IPMC, this is just a practical example. And and we're we're good friends with some colleagues in Fort Collins, you know, working in a college town is is a little different challenge. And and this is a good example because it's a real life example and I've, just for the sake of discussion, I like to think of college kids. And uh you know, if this is down the street from me, it's like, well, you know, what what's. Uh our existing code would actually have more allowances, allow up to to ten individuals living in a nineteen hundred square foot house. The twenty twenty one IPMC is seven, so this is this is just just a simple example, just to give you. A comparison reference point on uh what's on the books now versus versus what uh the the latest. The latest standard is is slightly more restrictive, so as we think about this. You know, if certain language in the code was removed, that would that would become more flexible. But there would be kind of a balance with the twenty twenty one IPMC, once again, kind of around life safety. So that's it, and these are the the three policy questions, um I'll leave these these up for to help. Guide your discussion and and questions, uh but we're we're seeking your guidance this evening and and we have been working collaboratively. With our colleagues in CAO, planning, building, uh zoning, code enforcement and and this this is. I'm I'm here as the representative with our collective uh recommendation for your consideration.
Well, um as someone with a unique family situation myself, I absolutely support the first two recommendations. Uh but I have questions on the third, which is it says persons, so that says to me that there's no difference between an adult and a child.
Good question, Counselor Carmelia, family, family is more flexible. So so with, yeah, I mean, a person is is a a child or adult, I mean, per but if there. Is a family relationship. That that would be o- okay.
I'm just trying to make sure that we're all clear and on the same page about, I mean, housing is very expensive right now and I'm not trying to kick anyone out of. They've got twins or something, et cetera, you know, is that going to change their circumstance?
No.
Okay.
Counselor Ireland.
So since I've never known this, that you could only have ten people in a nineteen hour square foot house. Um how do you enforce it? Or do you enforce it?
That's a great question, Counselor Ireland. Prosecuting an occupancy case is. It's possible, it it's exceptionally challenging. We've had much better success related to, like it mentioned boarding houses. Because there are separate agreements, we we have great success working impact issues. Um I was out this morning, working with the surveyor on on a project I have and and amidst. Some of the concerns on this block are related to how many people are exactly living in one house. When we've been in the house, we've had a cooperative owner, there are guests. There are people living, what i- it it's it's. The the prosecutorial bar, I mean, I I don't wanna speak for my legal friends, but it's it's. Let's just say it's not as straightforward as a property standards nuisance case or a zoning case where you have an illegal. Uh home based business or something like that, this is arguably amongst the most challenging civil cases that that we have.
Well, I am just surprised that the international rules make less people in a house. Because if you go to other countries like Central America where my son served a mission. There's four generations living in a little house, when he came home and he saw our houses, even little houses, he's like. Four families be living in that house, you know, so I just feel like. The state we're in with with unaffordability, I would keep it the way it is.
And and Counselor Ireland, you you know, you're you're correct, when when we talk about international, the International Code Council and. We do have in this room um a board member for the state chapter of the International Code Council. And and she could speak probably better than I could, but I can give you the high level, i- it's mostly first world countries. That have adopted those code standards because they'd be so prohibitive for the economic realities of so many developing countries. Uh and 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 as you state, and I just wanna be clear with council, i- it's absolutely a valid choice. To just keep what we have on the books, because that's how we govern and administer. Our rental property maintenance program, our systematic program, it's what council chose. For occupancy for the short term rentals. So i- it's it's they're they're close, but but i- it is more restrictive, so but it's 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 a fair choice.
The complaints that I've heard from the community really stem more from the cars per household. Can you explain a little bit more, do you know a little bit more about what what the restrictions are, if any, on that? Or is it really just everyone who lives there gets a car, you know, I feel like that's the pressing problem?
Oh, and Counselor Carmelia, you're you're right, and that's where we have to be mindful of impact issues. Um there are no, as long as your car is properly licensed and registered and in operable condition. And properly parked, whether that's on property or on the street. There there are no limitations, um there there are a couple blocks over from me, there's an old retired auto mechanic. And he has twelve cars that he keeps on the street, they're all licensed. All registered, he moves them. He's in compliance, but but that's an oddity and and by by and by and large, you know, we. We have effective tools both with our parking management team and our code, you know, they they handle the streets. Our code enforcement team handles private property, so whether it's prohibited vehicle issues or parking issues. You know, typically we can we can resolve those, I mean, sometimes, of course, uh multifamily properties have a. Restriction or you have to buy a parking spot or they they might have a limitation on that, but um. Yeah, it's it's it it kinda goes back to that license and registration and op- operability and proper parking.
It reminded me of when I was a teenager, there was five of us driving with, living at home plus two parents. So we had, we were accused of living in a boarding. That my parents were running a boarding house, it was just a lot of teenagers. But yeah, I, okay, so um the definition of family, I still feel like it's a little narrow. In terms of looking to where we might be going in the future for different types of housing. Situations, um you know, if we, obviously, we all recognize we have a housing. Huge housing um constraint in this region and just nationally and. I can imagine that there may be roommate situations for, you know, if seniors wanted to live together. In the same um unit like or roommates, I'm trying to understand how that. Relates to this housekeeping unit, do roommates count?
So Counselor Nermella, that that's a great consideration and what was very helpful for me. Um the the definitive piece of academic research, um it's from twenty twenty, but it's the most recent I could find was from a. Land use professor at Cornell and and she did a wonderful job, um it's it's quite lengthy, but wonderful job. Kind of dissecting legal considerations, practical applications in state courts and what have you and and. This definition here, I mean, anything we do would require further scrutiny with with our 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 friends. In the city attorney's office and you know, would ultimately be uh presented to you, but what we found from other jurisdictions is this. This idea of sharing the entire dwelling unit and i- and cooking together. Um you know, living, sharing household expenses, there there are some jurisdictions primarily in the east coast. That that have quite a an interesting set of considerations. Um and and there are different approaches as far as a more regulated approach to ensuring that it's a family. To a more hands off approach, so there 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 are different levels, I think, that we could dig into. I- if if there was general direction to to go in the direction of a functional family, I mean, another another. Question for consideration would be, should we define family at all?
Yeah, that's kind of more my thoughts, like I just, you you know, I don't know if, you know, millennial or. You know, Gen Z who actually doesn't have, has, who doesn't have a roommate, um if they're on their own in some other unit, so I'm just. Um. I'm just, a- and and then knowing that we are gonna continue to have to be in these strange. Or creative, I should say, um household typologies um moving into the future, I I just would hesitate to limit it. To this definition, if it's not inclusive of something that.
Can I clarify something about that, though? I thought you said um to answer another question. That family changes the dynamic, so that if you took family out, you're actually be, you're by essence making it more restrictive. Because you're you're, if I heard you right, if it's a family member, then we're not putting the same uh. Filter on it, call it, I don't know if that's the right way to put it, but it makes it more restrictive if I under, if I heard you right.
No, that that that's actually a a a good point, Counselor Demond, and that's, yeah, that's.
So ostensibly, could roommates just call themselves family?
Yes, I think that's where we're at.
Yes, the the short answer is yes, I mean, they it it gets back to the 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 single household unit and and I was just looking, cause I I found, you know, talking to some other jurisdictions. That, you know, trying trying to avoid the boarding house, trying to avoid more of like a transient thing. Like want wanting folks invested and and living in the community, you know, there are some jurisdictions that, you know, they'll. I- if if there are questions with a property, you know, just minor children that are enrolled in school. Um addresses for purposes of voter registration, driver's licenses, motor vehicle registration, filing of taxes, proof of employment in the area. So there's all this, you know, while while enforceability is a challenge, there are some things that we can do to say, hey. The these folks are legit, they're here, they're contributing members of the community. Um and and it, as long as it's not separate rental agreements for rooms. With one landlord, cause that's a boarding house.
I would argue, though, that they ca- that even if you're just renting a room, you can still contribute to the community just as well as a family. Uh as somebody renting or who would own, so and that, you know, we used to have. Uh boarding houses and rooming houses as an option and we don't have that anymore. Because it's it is seen as something negative and so, I I'm just making the argument, I'm not gonna push it right now, I'm just, but I I I do take umbrage with. You know, contributing members of society and people, so anyway, um okay, so enough of that, um the second. I I guess I could be okay with family, the way it's defined, as long as it, you know, it can include roommates and. That kind of thing, um the second one, remind me, what is the second one? That's fine, the third one for me was, yeah, it. To Counselor Ireland's point of like, why is it more restrictive when we have a housing crunch, I don't understand, so. See, you know, my mom grew up in a house of eight and in a thirteen hundred square foot home and. Um you know, you're kinda in trouble if you have more than two or three kids, if you're, so I can't imagine that we would reduce it. Cause I just, I know we don't have a lot of huge families anymore, but we have intergenerational families and I just would not wanna reduce the size.
I am not going to, if everyone wants to have a bunch of kids, I'm happy with it. Our 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 world's gonna shrink soon, I think, the lack of children, so I don't wanna make it smaller.
One second, because we're still going around to first timers. Counselor Ha.
Um yeah, I'm for the first two, um given what Counselor Demat shared, um. I'm any any way that we can make fa- family more inclusive, there's a lot of different reasons why people may have chosen family. Um so I wouldn't, you know, any way we can make that more inclusive, I think is uh great, but um yeah, I'm I'm. A yes on the first two and a no on on recommendation three.
Counselor Azadi, then Demat, oh, did she have a question that she said? Okay, and then we'll get to round two.
Yeah, I'm I'm confused, if you go back to three, I'm still confused on what this means, so twenty twenty one, is that saying? The limit would be seven persons per nineteen hundred square feet?
Yeah, and 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 that's just given an example and the and the reason that number goes down, so this this is just the best at a glance comparison. You know, what we have on the books right now, to and this is internet, ol- older and older version, but still applicable of in international residential code. Hundred fifty square feet for first occupant, hundred square feet for each additional occupant for habitable floor space. But the more restrictive test that's is 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 the bedrooms and that's where what we have on the books right now is a seventy square feet. For the first occupant, thirty for the second, the updated IPMC, it's it talks about a hundred twenty square feet. For every living area, so more, and the bedrooms seventy, so the same for the first, but fifty. For the second, so. Yeah, what we have in the books right now is is a slightly larger allowance for occupancy than the twenty twenty one IPMC.
Yeah, so I would I would agree with most of the folks here that um we don't wanna restrict this, I think. Not in a time of a housing crisis, especially when we have a migrant crisis also brewing. And we need to start planning for that and what we're gonna do as a city, but there there are gonna be folks who want to allow migrants in their home. And I don't wanna restrict that in any way, um the second question, so so the question I have is related to. The there there's a bill, there's an occupancy bill right now, how does that bill impact this?
So House Bill twenty four ten O seven uh is in line with this. I- i- it's the 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 bill basically um. Does not allow occupancy restrictions by what we have on the books right now, the no more than four. So what we're doing is very much in alignment with what um the sponsors of this bill have. But unlike what we're talking about this evening with specificity, with what we have in Westminster Municipal Code. With the International Residential Code, International Property Maintenance Code, this this bill doesn't have any specificity. So, you know, it'll be it'll be interesting to see if uh if this if this gets amended. Um but but yeah, essentially, the bill says, the bill would prohibit any city from enacting or enforcing. Residential occupancy limits unless those limits are tied to minimum square footage requirement per person. That is necessary to regulate safety, health and welfare, so they're they're alluding to this, but they don't have it baked. In the legislation, yeah, so it'll be interesting to see where this one goes and if there are friendly amendments. Uh to put some more meat on the bones, if you will.
So removing that up to four is in line, that's what that would ask us to do anyway. Okay, thanks.
Um Counselor Demat.
I'm fine with one and two, I uh, I'm really agnostic on on this one to be on on three. But I will, I wanna ask a a question, like, I understand everybody's intent and desire to expand family and it makes sense. But I, um, to be the negative guy in the room, what's the the traverse of that? So I think of some of the the problem houses that we have, where there's multiple tenants in some of the uh houses that you've had to deal with. Where, you know, you have bad actors and not, um, maintaining, you know, the people who live there's behavior, um, I guess to put it best. So what, how does that help them say, oh, nope, that's my, I, he's my brother, I, he lives here, you can't, you know what I mean? Is there a a negative to us expanding that that we're not hearing?
That, that.
Yeah, if I could, I I, we have a nuisance abatement ordinance on the books, which addresses the the behavior. That is, um, associated with a house, so if a house has a lot of criminal activity, that can be the basis for nuisance abatement. Um, so in in my experience, I think that's the basis for enforcement, is the criminal activity more than.
So that tool that we've added kind of addresses it and we're not concerned, I mean, because I'm on board with it, I just wanna make sure that. We've done so much work in that area, I wanted to make sure that that doesn't uh lessen the ability that you've gotten. Because those certainly, I think, were some of the most meaningful things that we've done in the last couple of years.
No, ca- councillor Demont, and as you probably recall, cause it was but a few years ago. Where with with Attorney Frankel's team and Police Department greatly expanded, you know, it was from some challenge, a challenging case in North Park. Greatly expanded what the definition of nuisance is and criminal activity on a property, and so. Um, what, I I think the the the, when it comes to impact issues, we have the tools we need. Uh, I I think as as councillor Carmelia brought up, the the only thing to be mindful of for us is parking. But that's, you know, and.
I have teenagers, so, and I was in in the house of four, so I know how much our neighbors didn't like that, but some of that's just gonna be a challenge, I think.
Some HOAs don't allow more than two cars.
Well, I mean, even if you think in like a, you know, some more modern living situations where you have like four really close friends, they might have cars. I know it's a pain for people, but as as long as, I guess my ask is just continue on the parking enforcement. Because that's what's gonna help us with that. But otherwise, that that addresses my concern, that would have would have been the only thing that I was kinda curious about, but I'm glad to hear that that's not a concern of yours.
Good conversations, I'm okay with one and two, three, I agree with you. I've got three places in our neighborhood right now that have more than six cars. And, um, the only one that doesn't get people irate is between a cul-de-sac and a. Where the Circle Drive goes, so there's this part of the street that they park across the street, so they don't take up neighbors' um spaces. So that's nice, but in in one of the, um, homes, there's one, two. Seven cars, they've had a driveway made especially for them, and there's seven cars and still someone on the street, so. It'll be an issue, you're gonna hear about it. Councillor Carmelia.
Uh, I wanted to insert the Airbnb discussion into this, how how does this apply to Airbnbs?
So short term rentals are governed under what you what you see on the left there. So that that's that's our existing code related to short term, long term, we 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 have consistency and equity in 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 rentals.
Families and Airbnbs are the same?
No, uh, well, the the fam- the families, the the square footage plays a larger role. With 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 the STRs, um, but, you know, i- i- it's. With the exception of two properties in the city that are larger properties that can accommodate, let's say, girls softball team for the 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 summer tournament. Um, you know, it's mostly families, families traveling, but it's it's, um, you know, if if there was a large family. That was staying in a short term rental and they're a family, a function, I mean, that would that would be. Okay.
Okay, I did hear a lot of complaints from residents that were like, oh, this household rents out to, you know, four different Airbnbs. And they come and they go, and it feels like maybe that's a different discussion, but I'm trying to figure that out.
Well, and we do, I I will let you know, cause we're we're about a month in and and things are going overall very well. In working towards compliance with folks a- a- with our licensing, with with the regulations that council put in place. We we do have a few examples of kind of a short term rental boarding house going on. Where eh the the city rules are, you can have one STR license per person. And, but you can you can license your house, you can license a portion of your house or a room. But you can't do four rooms concurrently at the same time, so so there, we're working through that with, if you, I don't know if you've heard about that. But we 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 have some, a few enforcement challenges.
And that's, we, for the benefit of the new folks on council, that's fairly new, that's something we did in the last, last half of last year, probably. To address some of those things that you probably heard, you know, out recently, and so I'm excited to see where that goes in the next twelve months. And hear back how that's working.
Awesome, very good.
Do you have what you need? I think I've counted the numbers.
Yes, yes, um, ba, thank you very much for the discussion and the guidance, we will proceed. Um, for for more formal City Attorney's Office review for councillor's bill, um, ordinance for number one and two. And we will leave the existing Westminster Municipal Code language as is, um, in eleven twelve four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get five mayor?
Sure, we need.
I got a lot of.
All right, if I start?
Yeah.
Good evening, uh, my name is Andy Ladd, Community Engagement Commissioner for the city. Um, I'm here tonight to seek your guidance and feedback on proposed two-year um, City Council Community Engagement Calendar. It's based off of feedback from Mayor McNally, uh, Councillors Demott and Zalati, based on previous comments that they've made in the past around providing certainty for a long-term calendar. Uh, we've added two, or we've proposed two budget town halls specifically ahead of the budget cycle to ensure the community has, uh, an opportunity to provide, the community and council to provide feedback. Um, we, and then we aligned it to the, the city's strategic priorities. And we tried to be thoughtful about when we placed them. Public safety in August when, um, uh, summertime activities are, uh, are, are popular. Uh, and then, um, preparedness and resilience in the winter around the time where we, we would think, uh, cold weather, cold weather sheltering would sort of happen. Um, and then two, um, robust infrastructure town halls, uh, timed approximately when we think the, uh, drinking water facility construction will, will start to speed up and the municipal court project. Um, uh, and then, uh, with each town hall, we also propose a, uh, a listening session tied to a quadrant of the city. Because we don't have wards, we roughly use one hundred and fourth in Sheridan as ours, like the, the crosshairs of the city, and then we determine northwest, east, south, based on that. Um, that said, I'll stop talking and I'm happy to take your feedback. Yes, Councillor Demott?
Um, I think I appreciate the fact that you responded to our feedback on this. Um, and generally that it's kind of timeframe versus exact dates because obviously that'd be very hard for us to plan ahead. Um, I will say, May's a busy month, and so, uh, that's just one concern. There's a lot of people doing stuff, graduations, all that kind of stuff, so I'm not sure if there's room for wiggle. Um, the only other thing that I wanted to, um, bring back was when we, like, I like the telephone town halls. They're usually well-attended. In the past, we've asked about potentially, um, using like a social media platform as well where we could take, um, online questions. So I don't know if that's something that you think about incorporating into the same telephone town hall, and maybe you, um, alternate between questions that come in online versus the ones that come on the phone. That might be difficult. Um, but that's the only thing that I, you know, the only two things that I wanted to ask for. And you don't have to have an answer tonight, but maybe, you know, as you move forward, you can incorporate that somehow.
Got it.
Um, can I just, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I might, I didn't notice it's a call.
Oh, the mayor, the mayor does it.
Okay.
She'll, she'll get us in line. Go ahead. Okay. Um, the, I would, you know, I, in the past, I've also talked about just diversifying some of the formats of the town halls. And the one where I think that that might be most useful and maybe just to consider is the budget one. Um, you know, if there are themes or different smaller groups where people feel like they have more, you know, comfort sharing ideas or something. Uh, I'm throwing it out there. I, I don't know if, um, you know, if you, if your team has other ideas on, on when a, a different format might be as most useful, but I will, I'll throw that out there again.
Um, uh, Mayor Portemner Mella, that's actually something we are considering. Um, and that's, that's part of this discussion tonight. We were thinking for, at the start of the year, to include a presentation around the state of the city to provide, so either staff or council to provide an update about the goings-on in the city as a, as a wrap-up both of the previous year as well as the looking, the, the more forward-looking presentation um, with the budget town hall. Um, if that's council's direction, we would be more than happy to have, uh, a group setting where perhaps what we could do is have tables and a councillor at each table to facilitate a conversation and then have you rotate around the different tables. That may foster more authentic, um, uh, conversation where folks may feel a little uncomfortable sort of speaking to a larger, uh, audience. We would be happy to pursue that.
Councillor Camellia?
Yeah, I was gonna address the same topic, so thank you, because I absolutely agree. And this was gonna be one of the main things I wanted to talk about in our strategic meeting too was how do we better communicate with our community, especially through the forum of the town hall? How do we, um, get, I like the idea of more diverse ideas for that. But first and foremost, my input is education. I think our public needs education in general. And so, I was surprised to see that the town halls did have themes to them. Even our first one, which I didn't, I don't think we touched on that. We mostly just did Q and A, and so I'd love to see the beginning. In my opinion, it should be every town hall, but in some of the formats of, okay, let's look at the theme. How do we educate the public on what are we doing around that? Um, and then go into Q and A or then go into whatever format. And so that's something I'm really hoping I can get some support behind because most people I talk to don't know who we are, what we do, or what their city does. And, um, yeah, love to fix that.
Councillor Ireland?
I wanted to ask, how did you pick the themes? Was that something you gave input to Dave and Obie, or is that something you?
These are our strategic priorities.
Strategic priorities?
Yeah, the five.
Okay.
And then we had two budgets because that, that's gonna happen.
I just wanna know, well, there's some hot topics in our city. And that's what a lot of the citizens are concerned about. So, I would like th- those to be the, some of the focus of these town halls. What people are really fired up about as much as getting into the, the budget, you know? Um, so I'd like to, you know, I, I know they're, they're hyp- focused on the dog park right now. And if we could have town halls that are just for those type, type of things, that's what I like to see, the things that people are really concerned about.
Councillor Zadi?
Thank you for this, this is very good. Um, my question is related to the community listening sessions. What's your vision for how that, how would that flow?
Um, it wouldn't be live-streamed, it would be much more intimate. And we, we provided a, some potential groups. Um, but again, this is for council's feedback to identify which groups you, you'd like to engage in. Um, and the idea would be to have a authentic conversation where they, um, not everybody likes to talk when they know their, things are being live-streamed and things are being recorded. Um, uh, in, in a, in a smaller group setting, much like, like a listening session as opposed to a town hall.
So, for example, this one that says Westminster's Farmers Market?
Mm-hmm.
We would all be there, the community would come, and they would, they would go one by one?
The, there's a couple of different things that we were thinking about. So for maker housing, uh, that we, it would be something that we did last year. Where it's very specific to that, the needs and concerns of that community. And like, they would, they would be led by the community. At the farmers market, this is our chance to do more of a s- outreach and a stretch goal. Folks who frankly may not know that we have a council, that may not know we have a mayor, they're there to get some popcorn and some hatch chilies or whatever. And like, they, they see you and they have, they get to have a chance to have a one-on-one conversation. That's sort of what we were thinking. We, um, we also, uh, actually just bought a, uh, a pop-up canopy that's branded City Council so that like, it, it clearly identifies who you are and what you're here for.
I think that's a great idea. So basically going to various places, meeting people where they are.
Exactly.
And whoever's there can just, sort of like a magnet.
Exactly.
Versus the other ones are more direct pro- promo, where we're trying to get folks to come.
I think that's exactly right. And it's also unusual places where they're not expecting us to be, so we get to meet and hear different voices.
Um, Councillor Demott?
I just wanted to, um, share some thoughts on Councillor Normella's idea. I'm not opposed to that, but one of the things that I've heard in the past when we've done those, because we used to do those kind of formats when I first came on council where we had kind of themed and table. In some extent, they worked well. And I think where they worked well versus where I got negative feedback was when we were really trying to, um, gain information versus trying to convince people what we were doing was a good idea. Um, say like water rates being a, an example of that. So I think that if, you know, if it's done in a way where we're educating, here's what we're doing. Or even, you know, trying to get some, uh, using that as a mechanism to gain some of that feedback before we make decisions would be nice. If, if you, if we know we're tangling with, say, three options, it would be nice to say, hey, community, here's three options we're looking at. You know, what are your thoughts on them? Um, so I think that it can, I have seen benefit in it, but you know, it's, as long as we're not spoon-feeding them what, what we want them to follow, I guess, is the best way to put it. Um, because I just, I have gotten negative feedback when we did it that way. Um, you know, but I do think that there, it's a good opportunity to let people know exactly what we do and be, have that educational component and not just the back and forth.
The constraint is the councillor sitting at the table or at times when staff was used, has to remember they're there to listen and not use the mouth.
Yeah.
I wonder if I can marry a couple of different ideas together. Um, to, uh, to Councillor Ireland's point, the hot topics. Um, the hot topics, when they're hot, the folks are gonna come. And so we should always have a Q and A session and that we'll always have that, 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 that won't be a, that, that will be unavoidable. Um, and or- those things will organically rise to the top. The education pieces to, uh, Councillor Camellia's point, like, I think they're tied to the strategic plan. It lets us report out on, uh, on council's direction to staff. It provides a, an update for everybody, so that's the education piece of it. Um, and that's where we could, um, also have those authentic convers- conversations to, um, uh, Councillor, Mayor Portemner Mella's point. Um, I, I think we can do all those things at once. And, and to Mayor McNally's point, it, it, it could be led by council or it could be led by staff. And we could also give clear direction to staff that we're here to take notes and to listen, and we're not trying to pitch anything, so to speak.
Uh, you know, I have one more thing that is along with that because then I think it's something I've seen that the staff do, do really well in my time. There's been a couple instances where there's hot topics where you have done kind of ad hoc town halls that are led by staff. Most time, if they're available, council has kind of sat in the back and just listened to the feedback um, on both sides of it. And two examples were, when I was very first on, we kind of, um, pushed and asked if we could get a town hall around, um, the problem of coyotes over in, in my neck of the woods. And it was, there was probably, I bet there was close to a hundred people there. Um, and then more recently, around the Dog Hill, or Westminster Hill Dog Park. That was another one that you guys did that was staff-led. So, I would hope that we, we continue to maintain the opportunity for you guys to do those ad hoc ones. And those have typically, um, been more staff-led, where you are there to explain, here's the situation, and then listen to people's concerns. And I think, um, that's been reassuring to the residents in both of those situations where at least for some time, I think it, it decreased the volume around those, those issues. From, from my perspective, maybe staff doesn't see it the same, but, uh, those are two good examples of where I think you guys did a very good job having kind of those ad hoc things to address hot topics. And I wanted to at least bring that up when you mentioned the hot topics.
We certainly agree, and we have, uh, a Westminster Hills open space meeting scheduled for March sixth. We're gonna start promoting it once we lock down the, the details and location and stuff. But yes, those things will, that's a separate cadence of meetings. Those are part of our job.
Um. Just to let you know, that's a bad day for me. I am in chart, I'm helping with a teacher appreciation night in my church where the seniors get to pick a teacher that has influenced their life, and it's a big deal. And I'm involved with like thirteen youth that are doing it, so.
Got it.
That reminds me, not everything gets on the city calendar.
Mm-hmm.
We have our private lives also, plus other things that we're liaisons to and whatnot. So, as dates are scheduled, I really do believe they need to flow through here so we're sure we can at least get three people there.
Yeah.
Because we had some, last year we had one or two people there.
Yeah.
And that's not a council coming out to the community. So, um, that and, um, on your second quarter town hall, um, I would really use the rec center for a budget one because we know we can get two hundred and fifty people in there. Um, we can have, um, tables set up if that's how you're gonna do it or whatever. But, um, that I, I know gives good room and it has parking and people know how to park there. Um, the other one I saw, um, community listening at the Shabbat House. No, they only have eight parking spots. And so, um, they, you can park across the street at Station One, which I did the night that I went to their, um, their community meeting. And then there is open space next to them. The, um, other thing, they're communities of a size that you might want to do it more in the early summer because they have, like what other churches have a Bible school, they have something for kids and they usually have tents outside, so we could be outside. So, just things.
Got it.
That I know of from living there. Um, the other one, uh, town hall quarter two, Westminster Station and Irving Street Library is not in the central part of the city.
Got it, we can make that adjustment.
Um, and then when I look at north, we really don't go very far north. I don't consider myself north in College Hill Library. Um, I consider one hundred and twentieth on up the finger of Huron.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we've got apartments way up by the, um, Orchard Town Center, even sometimes Orchard Town Center, found us spaces to, um, be at. So, um, maybe we actually have it at the furthest north for a change instead of making them always come to us. Um, the other thing with having staff or other people give presentation, um, I've seen it both ways, I've lived it both ways. And if it's five or ten minutes, they might sit through it. If it's fifty-five minutes of your sixty minutes.
Yeah.
And then you leave five minutes for questions. I watched that for two years, that doesn't work. Um, the best solution I found was, we knew what our focus was. And then any question asked, all of us could try to work in, um, the things that fit there through the question. So we, we educated through the question, answered the question, but educated at the same time. That way you had seven people doing that and people didn't get bored. Um, and like I said, I've seen it both ways. And I watch things drop quickly when you start, um, just giving them education. If they want that, they'll join up in June for a six-week or eight-month class, whatever it is. So, um, just sharing that. Um, the roundtables and stuff, um, yeah, they got bad with things that were reported out were what staff either wanted or a councillor had persuaded. It, it wasn't what the people were saying. And people catch on to that one time, they're, they, you won't get them back. So we have to be very careful about, if we're gonna listen, we're gonna listen and our mouths are closed. We have no opinions. We're just trying to say, you haven't spoken yet, you haven't spoken yet, what are your thoughts? That's the most we say. We have no opinions, we're Switzerland that night. And that's hard for some councillors.
Um, would, to address your last statement, would it make sense to have a staff person and a councillor together? There, there's some accountability and then staff can also do, focus on note-taking? Would that a, address some of your concerns, Mayor?
As long as either one can slap the other one's hand.
I, I would trust you to make that decision.
I've watched it, I, I watched it for twelve years, so I know what goes on.
I do think it's nice for the note-taking.
Yeah.
Yes, agreed.
Selfishly.
Yeah.
Really bad at that.
Speaking of note-taking, um, at the last town hall, we had forty-three questions, but I believe we only were able to make it through six. Um, would it be helpful if the questions are asked ahead of time, staff provides those responses, and instead of council reading, then we just provide a, a booklet to all the attendees so they, so that we don't, we can work through the questions to have authentic conversations for the folks who are there?
We had to have gotten more than through six. Real answered.
Yeah, we read the ones, I think we got through the pre-meeting questions and then not the.
And I was, I've been, we haven't met, so, um.
There was seven just.
Feedback from that town hall was, it was not helpful for me to have the, that back and read it. It felt like.
Yeah.
Um, it was disingenuous. Um, your question wasn't fully answered because your, um, cell tower thing wasn't on there. Um, no, I don't want that ever again, that was not good. We'd be better to get those cold. If we don't know it, we don't know it, we put it in the basket and it gets.
I felt like a, I felt like we're puppets.
Excuse me, sorry. And so, um, I just really, I, I know the time it took for you guys and I don't think it was worth it. Because if it's going online, go ahead and, if you're gonna do it, pre-do it so you know, um, whether we, and then you'll know what we got to or we didn't get to, but, um. And then somehow, we need, we had all but one had their question. Then I got one that was a page and I couldn't find the question. I asked Mayor Portem, I said, do you see the question on this page? And, you know, we're, we shouldn't have had to look that far. So, um, I chose not to, to read it because it was a lot of stuff. Be, when I did see it after the meeting, um, and it was the very last thing, um, I wasn't gonna read all that. That was, no one else justifies their question. And so, I did, I believe I did the right thing by not reading that whole thing. So, um, that was an interesting evening with different things coming in. But the ones that came in early, um, that took a lot of your time and ju- I'm glad we only did one of those because it just felt weird.
Mm-hmm. And, and to be clear, and then my apologies, I, we should have been more clear. That wasn't, that certainly was not meant for council to read. It was more background information. Um, can we, how can we improve, improve that process and, or be more helpful to council?
I think what she just said, if we don't know it, then you can go find the answer for them. But if we do know it, we should be able to say what we know. And not look like we're puppets.
Somebody had a good idea with, was it you? That just some of the statistics, but just one page.
Sheet sheet.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Not seventeen pages.
Yeah, that was hard to get through, um, right before. But I, I, I really appreciated having, you know, that cheat sheet information. But maybe if it's just something we could hold and kind of refer to, sure, yes. Have, seeing it beforehand would be great, but, um, just.
Less?
Less.
Less is more?
Yes.
Okay. Um, uh, would it be helpful, um, uh, you know what, never mind, I, I don't wanna spitball. Should, I, 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 Mayor, should I call on folks?
Oh, sorry, Mayor Portem, or Councillor Demott?
I, I like the idea of, um, you having them preloaded on the website. And if you could have something easy for us to go to, like I know that for the Westminster Hills Open Space, you had that easy link that we could go to. So if you had something like, you know, uh, whatever our website is slash council answers or, or whatever, whatever it is, so it's something easy for us to keep referring back to during it. That way, we, you know, it's easy for people to remember, hey, you know, we might not know the answer, but this was put up ahead of time, here's where you can go see, you know, the staff information, here's what I know about it. Um, you know, and then we can kind of lean on each other to fill in where, where we do know what we don't know and still refer back to, to whatever that is, and then that's easy.
That, consider that done.
That's a great idea.
My qu- my concern is also May is a crazy month. My, my concern is also May is a crazy month. We barely have enough days to do all the lights on the building for all the graduations we have going. And it's a, but we have critical things like the budget. So, so maybe do the listening session in April. Combine April, May and do one each. I don't know, but just suggesting only one of those. And May is just a busy month.
I, I, you've told me that every year. That's why the, in 2025, we moved it to June. We, to give ourselves wiggle room, we wanted to experiment to see if May could work because in order to match up with our budget cycle, we needed to have that in May. But we can, let's see what we can do.
Leave, leave, leave the budget then for May, but move the other one so we're not doing two.
Yes, ma'am.
I just think that, that would help. And May or April is still sometime before they start doing everything. So probably the end-ish of May. But I would hope that we have the first two quarters dates nailed down ASAP and send out some things that look good. Let us respond and let's just make sure a majority is going to be able to be there.
If council's good with this general approach, what we'll do is we'll go back, lock down multiple dates for each of these things and then work it through the normal calend, calendararing process. So everyone's on board.
I would like the April one to be after strategic planning so we actually know, have something to say and know what we're doing, you know?
That's good. I was going to say, can the May one be early May? Early-er May, it's just when the end of the month.
And I think wards should be a, one of the issues. It's a hot topic.
Wards, yeah. I'd like to, like Counselor Demott.
World peace, can you get that?
Counselor Hutton, did you have something?
No, I, it was addressed, thanks.
Okay.
All right, yes. Yeah, I have a couple of quick thoughts. I'll make them all, all at once. Back to Mayor Potem's point earlier on the bullet point, or on a cheat sheet. I still feel strongly, I'm hoping that we can just keep these to a theme and so maybe just not answer all questions. Maybe the bullet points we get are on the topic we're discussing. And then folks can always put in questions and we'll get back to them or we'll have city council or staff get back to them. I just really feel like town halls should have some sort of focus. And I feel like that would help, in my opinion, really help communications, no?
I think it's back and forth. I could tell you after having themed ones for four years and then when Mayor McNally came back and was a little bit more open, that first one we did, we did it over at Westview Rec Center early spring of 2022. And I got just a tremendous about, amount of good feedback about just being able to come and, and voice whatever. So like, I think there's like an in-between, like I'm not against the themed ones, but I think it's nice for folks to have just that one night where they own the night and they can come talk about whatever.
Right. Well, and then feedback on that is, you know, maybe prioritize the questions. We had a lot of questions that night that were similar, that were the same thing. You know, can we just say, okay, if this is the question that we're answering, we're done? You know, if we can have staff at least filter through those, at least that might help. And then I had another thought very early on about the format. And this might be too much, but I'd love to partner, if, if we were able to, with either our fire department, do a tour and then do a town hall at one of the stations or with our police department and, you know, talk to them. This is just thrown down on the table. Or, and with our libraries, do a town hall at a library, but first like walk through, get folks to meet the staff of the library and talk about what they do. And then we have the rest of our town hall, you know, Q and A, et cetera. I feel like that'd be a really great opportunity to exhibit what our city does and get better relationships with everything we do. I know that's a lot, but.
Just know the fire department's, fire department do open houses. And PD did an all-day thing the last two years where they get to tour. And gosh, you, you guys have had hundreds, hundreds of people coming.
Yeah. And I've been to those myself, like independently, but there wasn't really a format to talk, yeah.
And I mean, maybe to that point of being where people are, like that was very well-attended. So I mean, we, we had like a, I mean, we did have our booth and people stopped by, but maybe, maybe you could just pair a specific thing where you put us aside in a room if people want to come tell us what they thought was good or bad about their departments. I mean, so it could be a, a good opportunity where you're kind of thinking outside of the box and just bolting onto something that we already are doing really well. That's a unique, fun idea.
Anything else? Thank you.
That's all we got, Mayor.
Nine thirty.